Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in this season of Advent, we come to you today humbly asking for your help and guidance. As we meet together in this place from all across our most wonderful county, may we do so in a spirit of cooperation, mutual respect and understanding. As we prepare to celebrate the birth of your only son, born in the lowliest of circumstances, may we hold in our hearts all those who need our help and support at this time. May love and our support help towards healing our social ills which drag so many into despair at this time of year especially. We think of those for whom Christmas this year will not be a time of celebration. Lord, in your mercy, hear our prayer. Today, dear Lord, we pray for all those who played their part and continue to do so through this pandemic, for doctors, nurses, health and social care staff, and for all the key workers and volunteers who have kept our society going. Please bring your blessings on them and give them the strength to carry on. Lord, in your mercy, hear our prayer. And finally, Lord, we pray for everyone here at this council, for our officers, staff and members. May we members today speak wisely, compassionately and thoughtfully, and we ask for your blessing on us all. And let us conclude with the Lord's Prayer. We join together, Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome now to the start of the formal full council meeting, and I'll get started with apologies for absence.
Thank you very much. We've received apologies from councillor Bowles, councillor Cook, councillor Coopland, councillor Strangle, councillor Mrs Rawlings and councillor Young. And attending virtually is councillor Carter, councillor Mrs Boquet and councillor Lee. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, on to item two then, declarations. Are there any more apologies that anyone knows of? No, no, thank you, thank you Debbie. Right, on to item two on the agenda, declaration of councillors' interests. Do members have any interests they wish to declare? No, can't see anybody indicating, so therefore we'll move on to the minutes of the meeting of the County Council held on the 17th of September 2021. Are you happy that I signed the minutes of the meeting of the County Council held on the 17th of September 2021 as a correct record? Would all in favour please indicate? Is there anybody abstaining? Some abstentions, I presume because they weren't here. Thank you. Thank you. Right, move on then to the chairman's announcements. I've been delighted with the support of my wife Jackie to have been able to carry out more civic engagement since the relaxation of Covid-19 restrictions and the associated role out of the vaccination programme. With Covid continuing to be part of our everyday lives and the emergence of new variants, we must remember that following new guidelines as they are issued is just as important as ever. Please be assured that I will continue to keep a close eye on the guidance as I look to represent the County Council at events around Lincolnshire and beyond. I would like to thank the Vice Chairman and Consort Councillors Alison and Richard Austin for their support during this period. Since the last meeting, we have celebrated Lincolnshire Day, joining with North and North East Lincolnshire as Greater Lincolnshire, illustrating our continued commitment to working together for the benefit of all our residents. This is also the kickstart of the Queen's Green Canopy, which is, as hoped, will see thousands of trees planted across the UK in commemoration of the Queen's Platinum Jubilee next year. The Remembrance Sunday Service held in Lincoln Cathedral was a very poignant occasion and was well supported and attended. I was pleased to lay a poperyth on behalf of the County Council. County councillor Bob, it is with great sadness that I report the deaths of a serving member and a former member of the County Council. Councillor Bob, County councillor Bob Adams, who represented the Constable Rural Electoral Division from the 2nd of May 2013, was chairman of the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee at the time of his death last month, having been appointed to that role on the 17th of May 2019. Councillor Adams had also been chairman of the Flood and Water Management Scrutiny Committee from the 11th of May 2018 until 17th of May 2019, and vice chairman of the Children's and Young People's Scrutiny Committee between the 17th of May 2013 and the 15th of May 2015. Former County Councillor Jim Swanson, who represented the former Spilsby Electoral Division from June 2009 until May 2013, also passed away recently. I'm sure you will join me in offering our heartfelt condolences to the family and friends of councillor Adams and Mr Swanson, and I invite you all to stand for a minute silent as a mark of respect. Before I invite speakers who might want to speak in tribute to these, to Bob Adams and Jim Swanson, I'd just like to say that I worked with Bob mainly on the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee, and he is an extremely friendly man, he was a real gentleman, he was popular with members and officers, you could see that all round. He was also a very, very knowledgeable and able councillor who made a valuable contribution to the debates, and it was all in all a great bloke, as somebody texted me when I texted them to advise them of his passing, and I think that summed him up nicely, a great bloke. And ironically enough, I mean, I bumped into Jim Swanson just a few weeks ago, five or six weeks ago in a garden centre, and he ambled over to me and introduced himself, he didn't quite, he knew, he knew me, but he didn't quite remember where from. He said, it was the County Council, wasn't it? Anyway, we got talking and, you know, he was old Jim, Jim was Jim, wasn't he? And I knew Jim Swanson mostly on the planning committee, where he was very vociferous and always had plenty to say, and represented his division with great gusto, is the way I would put it, and I know, you know, he had a reputation within his division for doing a lot locally and getting involved. So without further ado, I'd like to ask if any other members would like to contribute. Thank you, councillor Hill.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. I'd just like to say a few words about Jim Swanson to start with. Obviously, yes, he was a, he was very well respected and very well known in the Spilsby area, which he represented, and he was a character, he was fiery, and although he was a district councillor as well, but he was here for four years, but there were several elections which he fought, which were always tended to be quite fiery affairs, shall we say. So Jim was a strong character and he stood up for his area and wasn't afraid to speak his mind and tell you what he thought or everybody else. So yes, I think he gave good service to his community and to the councils. The other one, of course, is, as you've mentioned, is Bob Adams, who obviously was a serving councillor until his untimely death, was also a district councillor as well and former leader of South Kestefan District Council. As you've said, we, you and several of us here had the pleasure of, well, the honour of attending his requiem mass at the Roman Catholic Church in Grantham yesterday, which was packed, the whole church was full, and it was a full-scale requiem mass, the incense and the bells, and actually, in a sense, even if you're not of a religious bent, it somehow was very, very moving, but also very, very personal. And I think actually that suited Bob very much, and certainly the tributes, and there were some from, from members of this council, who councillor Wooton gave a very good summary, from all the tributes, including from the priest, actually, it was very clear that he was very, very well respected and very well liked in the community, because he was, and I think kindness came over it and conscientiousness, and also helpful, and I think all of us who had dealings with him and came into contact with him in this council would support those ideas. I think he was very conscientious and, you know, almost ridiculously, he kept coming to meetings and he'd ring me and say, well, I'm sorry, I can't come to X meetings, I'm off to go and get some chemotherapy in hospital. I said, look, for goodness sake, Bob, you know, get your priorities right here, get yourself, but no, he was here, and of course, he was here just before his death, overview and scrutiny, and the previous one, I do remember in terms of, he actually stood, I think, he was in this seat and he started coughing, fell over as he tried to get out of the room, but then five minutes later, he was back determined to play his part, so he was very, very conscientious. Very experienced, of course, as well, because he was a, I think he was a councillor in Nottingham City in the 60s, so he'd been around the block a few times, but typically of Bob, he didn't, you never heard him sort of saying, well, I knew best and I've seen that. He always had that, he listened, had that smile as well. And I think the other thing I admired about him, apart from his conscientiousness and his kindness, he never bore grudges and he took the highs and the lows equally. If things were going well, he didn't boast about it, but if he had, and he had some disappointments, and I think the biggest one was the loss of his daughter earlier this year, which is a big blow for anybody, but he took them all and didn't, neither got too excited and neither got too depressed, he just took it as it came, got his head down and got on with the job. So he will be a big loss for this council.
Thank you, councillor. Right, I have councillor Linda Wooton would like to speak.
Thank you, chairman. I'm speaking for Ray and I. We would like to thank everyone that attended the church service yesterday and for colleagues' kind words in memory of Bob. The church was full to capacity and it meant a lot to his family. Bob had been a councillor for 50 years, starting out at a young age in Nottinghamshire. He had been both chairman and leader at South Kestefan District Council and was a well-respected councillor who achieved many things. He was a thoroughly decent friend and colleague and fought his dreaded illness with positivity until the end. He even delivered leaflets for the local by-election and turned up at meetings when he really should have been at home in bed resting. That was the strength and commitment of Bob, and he will be missed by us all, I'm sure. We'd also like to offer our condolences to Jim's family. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Wooton. Now I have councillor Stephen Rowe would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just first concur with everything you've said about him, but I think the best comment I can make is that I think that I'm a better councillor for having supported Bob on highways scrutiny committee. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rowe. I have councillor Phil Dilks, as indicated, to speak.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I didn't know Jim Swanson, but I do know that Bob Adams was, as you say, a great bloke. I, it probably won't surprise you to know, I didn't always agree with his politics, but enough said there, but I did have huge respect for Bob, because he would reach out across the political divide to find real solutions to problems. I know this particularly at, not just here in this council, when I was here previously, but also in, at the district council, as the leader said, in where he was the leader and later chairman of planning, and as chairman of planning, I've got to say, he made a really good job of bringing that committee together and improving things. I would just say, as colleagues have said, no one was really surprised that the end came, when it did, we were all kind of expecting it, we could see Bob, you know, turning up at meetings when he clearly shouldn't have been here. But when it did, when that news did come through, I've got to say, I don't mind saying, I shed a tear for Bob, and I'm sure I was not the only one within this chamber to do that. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Dilks. Right, I know we've got councillor Rob Parker, please.
Speaking, excuse me, speaking about Bob Adams, I think I'm the third person to say that he was a good bloke. I chaired OBE and Scrutiny Management Board and he was a member of that, helpful, positive, kind, in the sense of trying to get messages across without being politically overt or interrupting. I think one of the things that stood out was, excuse me, during his illness, I spoke to him a few times on the telephone, and he seemed to be resolute in tackling, handling the problem that he'd got. He didn't get him down. The things that had been said by the people that were at the church service, I agree with councillor Hill, moving, positive, and almost a celebration of Bob's life. It goes further than Lincolnshire County Council into the district council and also into the work that he did in his local communities. Certainly as far as I'm concerned, it's the sort of councillor you'd want as chair of any committee, positive, inspiring and getting on well with people who will be missed indeed.
Thank you, councillor Parker. I've got councillor Marion Overton, as indicated, to speak.
Thank you, chairman. I did know Bob and I would echo the comments that were made already about him. I also knew Jim Swanson and he was in my group at the outset as an independent, and I have to say, he was certainly a force to be reckoned with, and he's served his community with great drive and determination, which I think did serve them very well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Overton. Right, councillor Alison Austin, Vice Chairman, would like to speak, please.
Thank you, chairman. Like many of us, I think, I was absolutely shocked, and yes, I had tears in my eyes when I read the email, but I didn't actually know Bob really very well at all. I was amazed, though, when I read about him, to see, first of all, he'd been a new councillor on this council at exactly the same time as me, but yet he seemed so knowledgeable. So, you know, I was impressed by this, but he was calm and efficient and all the time that I had dealings with him. But what impressed me was yesterday in the church, in the mass, obviously what respect he had within, obviously his local community from the point of view of his council residents, but obviously from within Grantham itself, where I presume most of the wider members of the, the members of the Catholic Church obviously came from, and I just was absolutely, I thought that was the greatest tribute possible, that amount of people at his mass yesterday. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Alison. Thank you for that. Right, are we anybody else wishing to speak? Right, thank you for those tributes, all very well said, spoken and deserved. We'll move on then to the next item on the agenda, which is the statements and announcements by the leader and members of the executive, and those statements have already been distributed and take them as read, and move on to the next item on the agenda, if that's okay, please. Right, on to item six on the agenda, and that's questions to the chairman, the leader, executive councillors and chairman of committees and subcommittees. And I am anxious to allow a good spread of questions across the chamber within the time allocated. I intend to allow 45 minutes for questions. I am expecting councillors to be disciplined because of the timetable, time available, and when invited to ask their questions, councillors should press the button on their microphone to make it live and press it again once they have finished speaking. And just remember, yeah, thank you for that. The first question I've got is from councillor Alexander Morn to councillor Martin Hill, OBE. Councillor Morn, I'm not sure where you are.
Thank you, chairman. The A1 through Lincolnshire is a key strategic road for both our region and the country, but with an accident rate of over 42 per annum, it is one of the most dangerous of its kind in the UK. I've recently written to Baroness Veer, the Roads Minister, setting out my concerns for the lack of A1 safety improvements between Grantham and Newark in my division. The response was disappointing with confirmation that no improvements will be made to the dangerous southbound slip road at Marston and no firm commitment for medium-term improvements either. I'd like to ask the leader of the council to support my campaign and by writing to the Department for Transport, expressing deep concern at the levelling down of promises from National Highways to make the A1 safer for motorists in Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, chairman. I'm very happy to write again, well, I'm very happy to write on this matter. It is a key concern of this council and indeed members of Parliament and the public of the issue about the A1 between Peetborough and the motorway up north, and it is becoming increasingly congested. There are increasing, every week it seems now, there, almost at least every week, there is an accident, sometimes serious, which causes the road to be blocked, and certainly also in a regional level as well, there's been a lot of campaigning done in terms of trying to get something resolved about this. Councillor Davies here has been doing a lot of work on this, and he himself has also been doing lobbying and campaigning to try and get something done, but I think the real solution is having it made into a motorway, so the A1 becomes a full-scale motorway from London all the way up to Edinburgh eventually. So the campaign continues. The MPs infected in those areas are also working hard to try and get some movement from the Department of Transport, and I actually attended a meeting with Baroness Veer, which my MP Gareth Davies had organised, and there is a lot of frustration that even talking about, doing something about the crossovers, which are very dangerous, very dangerous, and the slip roads, as councillor Morn has said, there has been no movement on that, which does seem a very strange thing in the scheme of things, and I think everybody is getting very frustrated at the lack of action or indeed lack of willingness to put this upgrade of the A1 into a long-term plan for the future. So I'm very happy to write those letters and very disappointed that we haven't seen much action yet, which on something which would seem to be in national terms pretty easy to resolve.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Thank you for that. I now have councillor Rob Parker to councillor Richard Davies.
Yeah, thank you. A simple question, no difficulty I think that you'll find in this, Richard. The Western Growth Corridor, I wondered if you could give members an update on where we're at. I know that it's about a relationship between the Lincoln City Council and the County Council, but it has been going on a long time. The Western Growth Corridor is important to Lincoln's traffic movement and also economic regeneration and housing as well, so if you could tell us where we're at as a county council.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Very happy to answer it. As you know, the city council is looking to make a determination on the planning in the new year. Our current position is we object on highways grants to the application as laid out, it is potentially disastrous for Lincoln and any benefit from additional housing will be far outweighed. We've been very clear from the outset, we've tried to work with the city council on delivering the scheme, but it involves getting those transport implications in first and developing the scheme in the right way, not cherry picking the cheap areas of land to develop on and then walking away, which is certainly my fear is what will happen.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Right, I have now councillor Mrs Marion Overton, MBE to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you very much indeed. Rhodes, as we all know, fill up our inboxes and our parish council, dominate our parish council meetings, and I am grateful for the work that we have had done. I also would like to know, thinking about the 12.3 million that comes up later in the discussion that was cut from the government grant, and then we had to make it up from ourselves, from as best we could, could you say how much difference that money makes to the highways budget? What impact does it have to people's lives, that extra 12 million? Thank you.
Yes, I mean, I don't want to forestall the debate we'll be having later, but it's ginormous, isn't it? It's 25% of what is arguably, and colleagues, exec colleagues won't thank me for saying this, the most important budget spend we have as a county council. You know, roads is the most fundamental service we offer as an authority, everybody needs it, even if you never even get in a motorised vehicle, Lincolnshire relies on it. The cut is tough, it's very tough, and I think we were already in a position where we're underfunded, let's be candid about it, to an extent we're managing decline because of decisions made nationally, and this is a real kick in the teeth.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Right, I've got councillor Mrs Angela Newton, MBE to councillor Daniel McNally.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to ask councillor McNally a question about the spaulding refuse tip. Recently, we've had a lot of improvements, and I believe it's because we've gone to discontinue the booking system. It has got better, I do believe there's less fly tipping in our area. We did have a problem when it first reopened, but I think it was because the advertised day was one when the spaulding tip was closed, so there was a lot of traffic turned up and they couldn't get in. was one when the spaulding tip was closed. So there was a lot of traffic turned up and they couldn't get in. We've overcome that. The staff now are very helpful, I've found. And but what I would like to ask is, this year through the summer, the peak time, we have been closed on Wednesdays and Thursdays. I'd like to ask, when you're reviewing the contract, can you consider not closing it through our peak times, even if you've got to close it an extra day in the winter when it might not be quite so busy? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. The simple answer is yes, it will be under, every HWR, say, the, you know, pretty much everything will be under review when it's renewed of the contract.
Thank you, councillor McNally. Right, I now have councillor Tom Dyer to councillor Richard Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And as many colleagues will know, the North Hycombe Relief Road will significantly reduce congestion and improve connectivity for tens of thousands of residents and businesses in the Greater Lincoln area. However, it will also have a transformational impact on the communities which I represent, and that being Waddington and Hycombe East. But I'm also sure that'll be for the rest of North Hycombe and indeed Lincoln as well, Mr Chairman. Given the congestion that my residents face daily and the recent events on Meadow Lane in North Hycombe, the relief road remains a high priority locally. Therefore, can councillor Davis please update the council with where we are as an authority in respect to delivering this transformational project?
Yeah, thank you for the question. You're absolutely right, councillor Dyer. It's a massive scheme and a massive issue for not only North Hycombe but Lincolnshire and Greater Lincolnshire as well. I think it's hard to underestimate, if you haven't experienced it, quite how bad the traffic in North Hycombe does get. It's monumentally bad, particularly along Meadow Lane that has been alluded to. And the real risk unless something fundamentally is done, Meadow Lane in particular, will continue to get worse and worse and worse in terms of congestion levels. I think the reality is we put an extremely good business case together to the Department for Transport, which resulted in the announcement of a near-record-breaking funding package to us for North Hycombe Relief Road last year, as colleagues will recall. We're already on the ground in terms of doing site investigations and the all-important geofiz with a view to going out to tender in the early part of next year in terms of design consultations. There's going to be a lot of work to do. It's a complex scheme. You would have thought building roads in Lincolnshire would be easy because everywhere is flat, but unfortunately we seem to have bridges, railways, rivers and other roads to deal with wherever we are. So it's not going to be an easy process. But I think the transformational, and it is going to be a transformational scheme, is well worth the pain that we're going to have to endure to make it happen.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Right, the next question is from councillor Mrs Julie Killie to councillor Richard Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Morning, councillor Davis. I've spoken about this issue before and my issue is about street lighting. Part-night street lighting has been in operation in Lincolnshire since 2010. And whilst Lincolnshire is not unique, as a local authority in having part-night street lighting, many other councils which do apply exception criteria, allowing some street lights to be kept on all night. The criteria that they may use is density of population, areas which have high levels of traffic parked at both sides of the street and areas where people feel vulnerable and unsafe. A recent reclaim the night march in November 25th, so just less than three weeks ago, organised by the University of Lincoln and supported by the Vice Chancellor and many other local stakeholders, emphasised this issue, saying, everyone has the right to feel safe in the streets at any time of the day. So I urge councillor Davis to reconsider the council's policy on street lighting in the city. Thank you.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you. And for me, almost the key word was at the end of your question, wasn't it? Because of course, you're interested in the city and only the city. Whereas I think as a county council, it's incumbent upon us to remember there are, and it comes as a surprise to some, I know, people who live in Lincolnshire who don't live in Lincoln, the vast majority of whom have never had a county council street light, yet have contributed towards paying for them. We do have an exceptions policy. There have been cases where lights have been turned back on. But I would say this, like all of these questions, whenever they come up, if you want to spend money over here, what do we not spend money on in order that people can have some street lights between midnight and 6am? Because those people that are out feel unsafe. I don't think that's necessarily a good use of taxpayer resources. We've just heard from a colleague behind you, the impact of £12.5 million cut in the highways budget. If you're advocating a further £2 million cut to put street lights back on, I wonder where that would leave the residents of both Lincoln and the rest of the county?
Thank you, councillor Davis. Right, the next question is from councillor Ashley Baxter to councillor Martin Hill, OBE.
Thank you, Chair. In 1976, the Stamford Mercury reported the opening of a space-age leisure centre for the Deepings. The centre is now 47 years old and is currently closed due to disrepair resulting from, A, decades of inadequate maintenance and B, the lack of a suitable lease between the County Council, the District Council and the school in which it is sited. The site belongs to the County Council and for 10 years, the County Council has been involved in negotiating a long-term site lease for the Deepings School and the leisure centre. Recent progress has been made, but we're not there yet. And remember, it's a site which is long-term, not the lease negotiations. About five years ago, the County Council withdrew annual funding of about £126,000 from the Deepings Leisure Centre, and this lack of funding also contributed to the deterioration of the centre. South Kesteven District Council is on the brink of agreeing a large-scale refurbishment of the Deepings Leisure Centre, but there are two main obstacles to this going ahead. Firstly, the lease and secondly, the funding. At SKDC Cabinet last week, the leader of South Kesteven, councillor Cook, encouraged all of us double-hatters to approach the County Council for assistance with both of these issues. So here I am, obedient to councillor Cook's request, asking the County Council leader politely for as much legal and financial support as possible and as necessary to deliver a leisure centre in the Deepings, which is not just for the space age but also for the 21st century. Please.
Councillor Hill.
I thank councillor Baxter for his very polite request, and which I have to say is, the question was very similar to the one we had last time, so it probably won't surprise him. He'll get a very similar answer. So just to reiterate what I said last time is that it is not a statutory responsibility of this council to provide leisure centres. It's actually not a responsibility for this council to support academies, who are, you know, previously in years, he quoted 1976. Back then, of course, it was a county school. It is now an independent academy. And despite the fact that the council spent millions of pounds on that school getting up to a good state, all that money was then taken thankfully by the academy and not one penny was paid back to the council to service the debts that were taken on to do that. So the issue with the lease, of course, is there's never been an issue for the County Council. We've always been very clear that once the academy was set up as part of this complicated chance-to-share scheme, which is probably the cause of the difficulty, we've been more than willing to hand over the lease to the school, to the District Council or to whoever. The problem has been that the school hitherto has refused to take on the lease because it doesn't want to take on the leisure centre. You can have your own thoughts about that. I mean, I thought cake and eat it sort of comes to mind, but that is the situation. My understanding is that negotiations with, between South Kesteven and the school are progressing well and one hopes that once that deal is agreed, then the District Council will be able to presumably borrow the money to upgrade the leisure centre as possible. So yes, always welcome to and listen to contributions and requests for support and we'll look at that. But bearing in mind, you know, we have major issues of ourselves and we all know about the adult care budget, where, you know, we have massive pressures and big worries about how all this is going to be afforded in the future. But certainly, I've not had a formal request from the District Council yet. I've had various conversations with various parties. And until the District Council finally agrees what it does want to do, which I don't think it's quite got to that stage yet, I think this matter will be up for negotiation and we'll also have to see what the results of the various settlements to the two councils are before we proceed any further. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Right, I now have councillor Rob Kendrick to councillor Mrs Patricia Bradwell, OBE.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Councillor Bradwell, we're all well aware of the excellent record that the council has in safeguarding of young people. I wonder if you could tell us how safeguarding has been maintained during the pandemic? I think many of us are aware of the tragic case elsewhere in the country involving a very young boy and the failings there. So if you could update us on how we're dealing with the situation in the pandemic? Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kendrick, for that question. Arthur's death was a tragedy and our thoughts are with his family at this terrible time. Lockdown saw many concerns raised about the risks of hidden harm for vulnerable children. And Lincolnshire Children's Services worked extremely hard to mitigate these risks during the pandemic. We continued to visit families face to face where concerns were presented and we secured right from the start a good supply of PPE to protect the staff with the help of local businesses and the LEAP. Our health visiting team remained on the front line as well, helping our social workers. And they weren't deployed to the NHS like was seen nationally in the first lockdown. In Lincolnshire, calls to our safeguarding lines from concerned family members and members of the public increased. But what we did was we changed our response to recognise the increased challenges in response to the pandemic. Whilst very sadly, we can never be certain that a child will not suffer as Arthur did in Lincolnshire, I am confident that our teams were aware of the risks, changed their decision-making processes and continued to visit families and put children at the heart of their approach to mitigate anything further. We have recently had our annual conversation with Ofsted. They do come once a year and that's just their way of saying they're coming once a year. And I have to say that they raise no concerns about our safeguarding work. And in fact, they were commented on how our staff had supported families during the pandemic. We have a good children's services, as many members here will know. But I have to say, that really is down to us agreeing to protect the funding to the frontline services that safeguarding provides to our families in Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bradwell. Right, the next question I've got is from councillor Tom Ashton to councillor Colin Davy.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. From April of next year, the risk management authorities that are currently responsible for keeping Lincolnshire safe from flooding will no longer be allowed to use white red diesel in their plant and pumping equipment, representing something in the order of a 50% increase in their costs. This will translate to a cost of about £1 million for the Environment Agency and anywhere in the region an 8% increase in the drainage rates for internal drainage boards, irrespective of the fact that golf courses and travelling fund fairs have already secured an exemption. Councillor Davy, would you be prepared to lend the support of the County Council to the Drainage Board, to the Association of Drainage Authorities and our district colleagues to the effort to get the government to see sense on this and maintain the exemption for risk management authorities? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davy. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Ashton, for the question and I'm obviously happy to support that. You know, I think the other challenge that drainage boards and the Environment Agency face is not just around the red diesel issue, it's also around the increased cost of electricity. And all of this actually will end up on tax bills for somebody ultimately. And I think there is a real challenge. The last time we had a major flooding event in the county, the extra electricity costs for the drainage boards ran into hundreds of thousands of pounds per drainage board in some cases. So, you know, these are really big issues. And ultimately, government should set one set of rules for everyone and there should not be this inconsistent approach, as you've indicated. So I'm very happy to support that.
Thank you, councillor Davy. Right, I've got councillor Phil Dilks now to councillor Daniel McNally.
Mr Chairman, thank you. I had occasion to speak to councillor McNally last evening and thank him for the information that he's provided on the issue I was wanting to raise today. But on the basis of that information that he's given me, there's no need for me to ask the question today, so I withdraw it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dilks. Right, I now have got councillor Kevin Clark to councillor Colin Davy. Kev.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Davy, August of this year, I requested a list of companies that benefited from the Lincolnshire Community Fund, where requests could be made for up to £10,000. September, received an email from Justin Brown's office stating, you will have something soon. Later in the month, received another email informing me that information will be given in a couple of weeks. Moving forward to the end of November, received a newsletter stating the number of businesses that receive financial help from the authority. However, the request back in August was for a list of companies, not the overall number. I'm sure you all agree that transparency is best policy. Therefore, when will I be getting the information that I requested? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clark. Councillor Davy.
Thank you, councillor Clark, for the question. I'm sorry you haven't got the answers to the question that you require. So I'll make sure that is forthcoming as quickly as we can provide that to you. However, as I've said in the newsletter, we have got a quite clearly successful campaign of supporting businesses across the whole of Lincolnshire, particularly those who had no support through the government scheme or through the monies handled by district councils. So I'm really proud of the work this council has done in keeping some businesses going but also helping others to innovate and actually plan for the future. And some of those businesses were quite clearly in Lincoln. And, you know, I'm very, very pleased that we've been able to help those people. But I'll happily supply you with a breakdown of a district-by-district allocation.
Thank you, councillor Davy. Right, I've now got councillor Richard Cleaver to councillor Richard Davis. Councillor Cleaver.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I noticed that the statements by the leader and members of the executive in our agenda packs today contain no reference to the government's integrated rail plan for the North Midlands, which was published on the 18th of November. This plan runs through 160 pages and the word Lincolnshire doesn't appear in it once. Will you agree with me that this plan's failure to offer any commitments to improve rail services in our county is a terrible oversight? And will you take steps to try and ensure that Lincolnshire is not overlooked when regional and national rail infrastructure plans are being considered? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I actually don't agree because on the ground, what we are seeing, and I met with officials from East Midlands Trains this week, we are seeing, and GBR is being formulated when they finished arguing about where the headquarters is going to be, we are seeing an increase in trains coming through Lincolnshire, particularly around Skegness. And actually, the loop in Stamford has been specifically mentioned, which you may be pleased to hear, along with improvements at the railway station. And I think if you look at, for example, the work we did in terms of getting more east coast trains to Lincoln, we've seen an increase in trains on the east coast mainline, stopping at both Newark and Grantham as well, which are good feeder towns for the rest of the county. I actually think we're doing pretty well in terms of rail. The east-west links are more challenging. I think one of the problems that the East Midlands Trains and GBR are going to have is the shunting issue at Nottingham, which is proving as quite a barrier getting more trains over to us. One of their suggestions is to have shorter trains, which involves less shunting. Now, if any of us spent any time on a regional train in Lincolnshire, the idea that they could get even shorter is frankly harrowing. So the pushback we're making, and actually, I think the regional work we're doing through Transport for the East Midlands is helping on that. Historically, you're right, we have always missed out in terms of trains. Our good friend Dr Beechley crucified us. But if we take the example of, say, Swindaby, where the County Council, it's a very small station, has invested some government money and some of our own in making the car park better, putting up some facilities to make it more attractive, we are seeing more people using real regional railways. And that's what matters. using real regional railways. And that's what matters to the rail companies, without a shadow of a doubt. And I think we could look at places like Ancaster, we could look at places in South Holland as well, where there are the infrastructure, we can upgrade it, to get more people onto our trains. So in broad terms, it doesn't worry me so much, I'm not a big control find number of times places mentioned, that's not for me the marker. What matters to me is when we have the discussions with the experts from these regional and national organisations, we are getting mentioned and they are looking at us, and I think that's a better sign.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Right, I now have councillor Colin Matthews to councillor Colin Davie.
Thank you, Chairman. Colin, I'm going to ask you a question about a fast-spreading, highly infectious disease, but it's not Omicron. It's highly pathogenic avian influenza, H5N1. I have a few chickens, and as such, I'm a partner of Alpha, and Alpha have been sending me information. There's been a confirmed outbreak in Charnwood in Leicestershire, Pocklington East Yorkshire, Sudbury, Bebra South Suffolk. Now, in the middle of those triangle of points, just about centrally, is a place called Alford, which is my ward. Each time there's a confirmed outbreak, they put in a three-kilometre exclusion zone, and they put in a 10-kilometre surveillance zone. Can you explain the impact for any chicken businesses in the Alford area if a case were to be confirmed in East Lindsay or indeed in Alford? Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Matthews. Councillor Davie.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councillor Matthews, for the question. I think it's probably worth just putting in context the importance of the poultry sector to the Lincolnshire economy. 14% of eggs in the UK market are produced here in the county, about 17% of the chicken and poultry meat. It employs approximately 7,000 people, it's a part of the economy that's worth about a billion pounds a year. So this highly contagious H1N1 strain, which is spreading across the UK at the moment, would be extremely damaging to not just the farmers and businesses involved, but to the Lincolnshire economy generally. We've already had a couple of scares already, which have been investigated, which fortunately did not turn out to be that particular strain. But it's quite clear in my mind that it's only a matter of time before we have a major outbreak of this particular virus somewhere in the county. And I can inform council that DEFRA are currently investigating further potential outbreaks within the county as I speak, and that will be notified to us. DEFRA are the lead agency for this, and my economic team will look after businesses who might be affected in any way we can support. And obviously, our emergency planning team and public health will be engaged if any outbreaks are confirmed in your area, councillor Matthews, or in the county generally. But I would say, Chairman, that this is a fast-moving situation. DEFRA are extremely concerned about it. It is very early in the winter season to have so many outbreaks in the UK, and they are expecting this to be a big problem going forward. So we will work diligently with DEFRA and across our areas to make sure that we support the businesses that might be affected, but also make sure that we keep this part of our economy vibrant for the future. Thank you, Chairman. And can I just add, actually, anyone who keeps poultry outdoors should now think about containment for them, particularly to avoid any contact with wild birds, particularly migrating birds. So I can offer that as a piece of advice to the council and to the media present. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davie. Right, that's the end of the questions that have been notified of, so I intend to move on to the next item on the agenda. And that is to item seven, appointment of members to the Bourn Town Hall Trust Management Committee. And the report by the Executive Director of Resources has been circulated. Is there a mover and a second? I think councillor Woolley's going to—
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I would like to move this paper. I'm quite sure everybody's read it. It's one of those nice little papers, as we all know, but it's got some vagaries within it, and it's nothing to do so much with the way that the county council works as—rather, it's history. So just for those of you that don't know, one of the—well, I was going to say anomalies. You might be looking at me thinking, 'Well, I thought you represented part of the Bourn area, and indeed, why does councillor Reed represent the other bit of the Bourn area?' We are not allowed to sit on this committee, apparently. I'm sure we're good and fit and proper people, but we're just not allowed to. So I will reserve my right to speak, Chairman, but I would like to move the paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Woolley. And how about a second and for the councillor Aid?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'd really like to second this. I'd also like to thank the support of other councillors that can support Bourn Old Town Hall. We're deeply grateful to Lincolnshire County Council for the way in which our lease has been organised. There's a huge benefit that comes to all of our district within Bourn. There's a huge volunteer section that have improved it, and bought some really meaningful facilities, and much life by ways of concerts and various other things. So I'm very happy to second it. And again, to repeat myself, my gratefulness to councillors for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Aid. Are there any speakers really wishing to speak? Councillor Woolley, do you—come back to you. Do you want to sum up just and give the names of the people that are nominated to the committee? Richard, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So as you can see, the council appoints the following voting members to serve on the Bourn Town Hall Trust Management Committee, and those councillors being councillor Martin Hill, councillor Phil Dilks, councillor Adam Stokes, councillor Tom Ashton, and the councillor elected to the vacant Colsterworth Rural Division.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's from—right, would all those in favour of that proposal, please? Looks like—it looks unanimous, but I will check. Are there any abstentions and anybody against? No, it was unanimous. Thank you, councillor Woolley. Right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item eight, the revocation of bylaws made under section 164 of the Public Health Act 1875 with respect to land at Andaby Creek, land at Woolabank, land at Marsh Yard, land at Mogzai, land at Hutoff's Car Terrace, and land at Chapel Six Marsh in the county of Lincolnshire, and dated 24th of September 2013. Have I a mover? I believe councillor Davie. Yep, thank you, Colin.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm pleased to propose this report to the council, which outlines the requirements for revoking the existing set of no camping bylaws at these six coastal access sites between Chapel St Leonard's and Sandalands. These were originally introduced to help combat wild camping and continual stayovers by motorhomes who were avoiding site fees and input to the local economy. Unfortunately, the regime was difficult to enforce and required prosecution actions. So earlier this year, following approval from the Planning and Regulation Committee of this council, a new regime was introduced which enables a penalty charge notice to immediately be applied to any vehicle present on site between 10pm and 6am. The revocation of the bylaws is the final part of the administrative process, and therefore tidying up, to ensure that there is no overlap of different enforcement regimes at these sites. If council is minded, therefore, to approve these recommendations in the report, then the revoking bylaws will be submitted to the Secretary of State for his approval. I therefore, Chairman, move the items in the order paper, one and two, for the council to adopt.
Thank you, councillor Davie. I believe councillor Colin Matthews is going to second this. Councillor Matthews.
Yes, I'm very pleased to second this proposal. The existing bylaws simply don't work, and they have caused us more problems than they were worth. That said, the tourist economy on the east coast is beginning—it's thriving, and will continue to thrive, and we need an effective tool to manage car parking in the six areas that you've talked about. So I'm absolutely pleased to second this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Matthews. Have we—anyone wishing to speak on this? Can't see anybody indicating, so I'll therefore move straight on to the—to the vote. Would all those in favour of the proposal and the recommendation please indicate? Yep, it's clearly carried. Are there—I don't think there are any abstentions. Didn't see any abstentions. Anyone against? No, so that's unanimous again. Thank you. Right, move on then to item nine on the agenda, which is the Members' Allowances Scheme. And this is a report by the Executive Director of Resources, which has been circulated. Is there a mover and a second, please? I believe councillor Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to move this paper. So just for—just to give an outline of procedure, every four years, in other words, once every council, we are required to have an independent remuneration—independent panel to come in and look at our—the Members' Allowance which we receive. They then recommend to the council, it is a recommendation, that what their view is. So they have duly come and over the summer have been looking at the Members' Allowance Scheme, which they've duly done. I think the feedback I got from them was basically there was very little feedback, which I think would indicate that more—that there is a general view that the allowances shouldn't change too much. And that will—so the recommendation's in effect. There are some small changes, and one is that the chairman of the—or of the planning committee and chairman of the pensions committee should move up a band to put them in line with the chairman of the audit committee and the vice-chairman to follow as well, but also continue the recommendation that any increases will be as in related—the same as pay covered by the National Joint Council for Local Government Service for employees. So our—any future rises will go in line with whatever our employees do. So that's a very minor adjustment, and I recommend this to the council.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Have I got a second? Councillor Colin Davie.
Thank you, Chairman. There isn't much more to add than that. I happily second—second this and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you, councillor Davie. Have we any member wishing to speak on this? Councillor Parka.
I agree with councillor Hill in the sense that this particular four-year appraisal of the council's allowances didn't receive very much attention. We all got the opportunity to comment, and I think that very few people did, including myself. I think the reason that—in part, was because it was—it seemed to me a quite different approach this time. In the past, the panel have come and set out their stall and said that they want to see these people, leader of the council, leader of the opposition, senior portfolio holders backbenchers, and interviewed them. In a sense, they—was a proactive approach as opposed to a reactive approach. Now, that produces different sorts of outcomes. The evidence that they put forward in terms of the table showed Lincolnshire to be in the middle, as it were, in all sorts of ways, but it didn't show when those particular appraisals for other councils had taken place. I think that more effort could have been made by the panel, to be honest about it, in a way that previous panels have used their leadership role in order to come and start talking to people and finding out what exactly what work has gone on. So for those reasons, the three Labour members will be abstaining.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Have I—any other member wishing to speak? Councillor Brockway. Councillor Jackie Brockway.
Just as an assurance, really, Chairman, just to assure you, councillor Parker, that the panel did put out several calls for members, and I responded, and I had about half an hour with them. And they were very interested, and they were very questioning. So they certainly—I do feel that they did make an effort, to be fair to them. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Brockway. Have we any other member wishing to speak? Nobody indicated, so I'm going to go back to Colin. You don't wish to speak. Councillor Hill, do you wish to sum up? So I'll move to the vote on that. Would all those members in support of the recommendation, the proposal, please indicate? Yep, that's carried. It's clearly carried. Thank you. Would those who are abstaining please indicate, so we can see? Thank you. Thank you. One over.
Chairman, I just wish to abstain because I am probably a receiver of one of the allowances.
Thank you for explaining that, councillor Fleetwood. And is there anybody against? Nobody against. Thank you, just to—for fullness on that one. So we'll then move on to item 10 on the agenda, which is motions on notice, which have been submitted in accordance with the council's constitution. And the first motion is a motion from the Conservative Group, councillor Hill, OBE. So I'd hand over to councillor Hill to move his motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is potholes or highways maintenance, as we like to call it in this council, is clearly a big—the big issue for many people in this county. I think as—I think as was stated earlier, I think my councillor Overton, it is the one issue which, whether you go to a parish council, whether you get correspondence, it is the one thing that everybody gets concerned about. And I think that was—this has always been the case, actually, and we've always known, if you're knocking on doors and talking to people, roads always seem to come up. And indeed, the election we've just had, I think everybody who was part of the election campaign would—it's got even more sort of loud, if you like, in terms of the understandable request from the public that we do all we can to maintain our road network. And I think some surveys that my party did in terms of what people's views were, I think 70% of the public said that was their major number-one issue. So it was very disappointing last year that the government grant to—for highways maintenance—the government gives us all sorts of grants, but the one in question is the highways maintenance grant. Well, last year, or last financial year, in other words, for this year financially, that budget was cut by 25%, or £12 million, from 51 to 39 million. They weren't picking on Lincolnshire in particular, but for reasons best known only to themselves, the Department of Transport Grant Shapps decided it would be a good idea to cut the highways maintenance budget for the whole country. And that's a big issue for all councils, but it's a very, very big issue for us, because as we all know, we've got a lot of road network. And we all know that a lot of that road network isn't particularly well-built in the first place. So this trying to maintain the highway network is very important, not only because the public want it, and when they go about their business in terms of going from A to B, they really would, you know, want a decent road to go on without dodging potholes and damaging their cars, and then trying to claim money back from the council, which is all—is very difficult, and we sympathise. But also, I think it's a matter of confident—economic confidence, because, you know, businesses tell us, and I'm sure councillor Davie will emphasise this, they—the one issue they want, they want good roads, so that when they travel from Lincolnshire, all goods come in, or if you're a tourist industry or whatever, having decent roads is a massive issue in terms of economic confidence. And, you know, I think we're told time and time again, 'Well, if you can't do something about the roads, we'll think about going down to move to Peterborough or somewhere else where, you know, we can get to our businesses and customers and deliverers can get there.' So it's a huge issue. Now, so we have been—it was very disappointing last year, and as the council well knows, we used some reserves and we used some underspend to actually plug that gap. We could do that for one year, but as we also all know, that the financial position of the council are very strong, is not such that we can keep on plugging that gap for another £12 million every year. Government's given a three-year settlement, so early indications are that they are thinking of keeping the same money coming to us. So that would be nearly £40 million, which we would have to find over three years. That's clearly not sustainable, because we've got to put this in context of—to balance our books, and we're grateful that the money that government has indicated, there will be more money coming to Lincolnshire County Council. We don't know how much at the moment, and that settlement is due on the 13th of December for our general— for our general account. But what we do know, that what we think we're going to get, which is usually about 1% of the national cake of 4.8 million, we can estimate where it will be in broad terms. What we also know is, in terms of the initial work we've done on budgets, is that whatever it is, although welcome and probably better than we anticipated, it will still leave a funding gap of probably up to, you know, 20 million a year or something like that, because we will have to pay for all sorts of things. To fill that funding gap, if we get what we think we're going to get, will be a strategy of rising, putting council tax up to some degree, using your reserves and finding savings. So we're already, that is already baked into our plans. And we also know the fair funding campaign, which has been going for years now, we're still very disappointed that nothing has been done about that and it's always put off for another year. Of course, if we've got a fair funding campaign and we've got anything likely over £100 million extra we would get from that, we could probably say, okay, well, we'll manage it. So I think it's very important that we do that, which is why today I would hope the council would support the launch of this campaign, not just for us to go to government, but also get the support of MPs, parish councils, the public. To put pressure on the Department of Transport, I think is really where it should be, to reinstate that money, because as we also know, if you don't, a stitch in time is very important with highways and if you don't do it now, it will cost you twice as much to repair it. And I sort of congratulate councillor Davies, because all the work he's done, making sure the extra money has, we've given him, has done a very good job in actually doing a lot of preventative work and although there's more to be done, we are in a much better place now than we were, say, eight years ago. So I think it's a very important campaign. Three of our MPs have already come out of the block, so to speak, and are actively lobbying the Department of Transport and the Treasury. But also, we want all of our MPs to do that and everybody else. And the only way we're going to get this resolved is to actually do a lot, a comprehensive campaign, it will be a comprehensive campaign, at the same time, putting that pressure on the government. And as we all know, if you get lots of people emailing you and contacting you, whether you're a councillor or an MP, you do it head to head notice. So I hope that all members will support this campaign so that we can see if we can address the issue.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Hill. councillor Richard Davies, I believe you're second in the motion.
Yeah, thank you. It gives me great pleasure, I'm sure it's no surprise to anybody to support this. I'd like to just very briefly talk about the fact, what we've done here. As an authority, as the leaders alluded to in the last eight years, we've not shied away for a start from making difficult decisions, as I alluded to duly earlier on. We have made tough decisions to protect highways maintenance. We've done a lot of things that people have expected us to do. We've moved towards first-time fixing. Gone are the days, hopefully, where you'll see cold material being going into a pothole and the rear wheel of a van going over the back of it. We've introduced mobile and static hot boxes. So at our depots that are a bit further away from the main, main processing plants, we have hot material there, so we can do those better repairs more promptly. We've reintroduced banding around the edges of repairs, so hopefully now you're seeing better quality repairs. We've moved towards far more proactive repairing. So we, rather than waiting for roads to degrade, we are taking, we're using the information that comes from our fantastic laboratory and we're predicting failure and we're doing larger repairs before problems arise. We've also tried to communicate better. We've invested in Fix My Streets so members of the public can report what they're seeing on the network better. We've recently rolled out the Members App, which I hope members across the chamber are making use of. And that's fantastic in terms of tying in. But there is a limit to what we can do. The reality is highways is the most important service we offer. To receive a 25% cut to that is unacceptable. And I think we all need to draw together to make sure that doesn't stay like that. One of the points I would make more nationally is actually the East Midlands, for the last 20 year, has been, 20 years, has been the poor relation on this. We currently receive about 58p in the pound compared to national spending on infrastructure. So where the rest of the country gets approximately a pound spent, we only get 58p. Now, I don't think that's a party political issue, it's been going on since the housing days of Tony Blair. But the reality is, whether you're blue or red in the East Midlands, we lose out. And that cannot continue to happen. And I'm so pleased that Carl McCartney and Gareth Davies and hopefully others have already stepped up and in the House of Commons, they've got off the fence, they've publicly said that this isn't acceptable and they've demanded answers. And I think it's telling already with the support we're starting to build, which is why this motion is so important, that you see within Parliament, already the Treasury are distancing themselves from the decision-makers of the Department of Transport. So the pressure, they're the people who have made this decision about how the split happens. It's all right, the government talking about hundreds of millions of pounds in vast parts. What we're interested in, what our residents are interested in, is what we're given to spend. And I beg you to support this motion so we can really put the boot in the behinds.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Davies. Right, I open up councillor Morn first.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to thank councillor Hill and councillor Davies for bringing this motion to full council today. I think highway maintenance is a key priority for across Lincolnshire and in particular rural areas like Hough Division, where we rely on the maintenance of country lanes to connect our villages to our towns. I'm particularly pleased to see the reference in here to the support of our members of Parliament. We've seen in other parts of the country like Teeside and Nottinghamshire, where groups of MPs working together for their region have made a big difference to government policy. So I'm sure we all, we're asking all seven Lincolnshire MPs today to support our campaign to reinstate the allocation of funding. And I think it's clear, it needs to be made clear to our members of Parliament as well, it's not the size of the cake that we're necessarily debating here, it's the slice of the cake we're being given as Lincolnshire County Council from the Department for Transport. So I'd urge all councillors to support the motion today. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morn. The next person I'd, a member I'd indicated was councillor Keely.
Thank you, chairman. Of course, a cut of 25% to highways is significant and I broadly will, I support your motion because obviously highways is an import, well, not an important part of the infrastructure, it is the infrastructure. But I'd just like to point out, whilst I know that we haven't got an infinite amount of money in the council, as Shadow Chancellor for Children's Services, I would emphasise that the current levelling up agenda, which aims to tackle economic and social inequality, would require the council to prioritise spending on children and adult care. And the impact of Covid over the last two years and the latest outbreak has highlighted the disproportionate impact on vulnerable children in areas of economic deprivation. And councillor Kendrick has already mentioned earlier about Arthur's death and the impact that that has had throughout the country, which is, you know, it's just appalling. So I would like to just re-emphasise the children who have suffered in poorer households. Everybody's lost face-to-face teaching, it's not been selective, it's happened right across the board. But in terms of life chances and employment opportunities for the future, it will disproportionately have a longer-term impact on these children. So I would like the council to consider the human consequences of what's happened over the last two years, and it's happening again, and consider increasing spending in children.
Mister Chairman, point of order, is councillor Keely speaking to the, to the motion?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Yeah, well, that's, you're speaking, you're not speaking to the councillor Hill's motion? Sorry, but, but really, really wants, you want to focus on councillor Hill's motion?
Sorry, sorry.
I thought you was asking, you've been asking us to support the last motion at the moment.
I am supporting the motion, but I'm just, I'm emphasising that other areas of council spending need consideration as well.
Thank you. Right, thank you councillor Keely. We'll move on then to the next, member is councillor Davie.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I'd first need to pay credit to councillor Davies and the work he's been doing in this whole area since the election. I mean, you know, delivering good infrastructure is critical for our residents and our businesses. And this cut, you know, of 25% is simply unacceptable. We can't, we can't just sit here and expect that we can deliver the services that our businesses and our communities need with that kind of cut being built into the budget going forward. You know, so government does need to react to our call for this money to be reinstated. Councillor Hill's made it very clear. You know, the things that businesses say to me are, infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. It's the message all of the time. If we want to attract big inward investment into the county, we need to have a good road network, as well as good other things as well, but particularly a good road network for goods and services to move freely across Lincolnshire. So I would also urge everyone to support this motion. And it's quite clear to me, governments need to start listening to places like Lincolnshire. They cannot continue to divert money away from big rural areas into inner cities. They cannot continue to send more money to Scotland and the devolved administrations for services which we are being cut, cut by, within our budget. So they need to level up properly and as has been said, not level down. And the best way of doing that is support this motion and let's tell them to get on and reinsert this money back into our budget.
Thank you councillor Davie. Right, move on councillor Bradwell.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I have to say, I agree with what Colin and Richard have said and actually, being one of the councillors, has a very rural area with many unclassified roads. It is a big issue out with parish councils and you hear many a story about, it's cost me X amount of hundreds of pounds because I've had a spring broken, because I've fallen in this hole. But I have to say, I am going to congratulate the highways team and Richard, because we have seen an enormous amount of potholes repaired this last year properly and they've not, they've not needed further repair afterwards. The rain hasn't got in. And, you know, this, taking away this money is really going to affect the progress that we perhaps could have made this next year. Because, you know, I have to admit, and don't praise Richard much, but the roads have improved in the rural areas. So they have improved, but there is more to do, there are a lot more to do. And, you know, as Colin said about the HGVs, and we've talked about chickens and chicken farms, lots of chicken farms are really down very narrow roads. We have huge big HGVs going down them and actually, they do damage some of the roads because these roads aren't, haven't any foundation at all, they're probably on a bit of sand. So, you know, I fully support this and I do wish that everybody could in the chamber today, because it is a major problem. And whether we're in Lincoln City, Boston or wherever, or in the sticks like I am, you know, it is a problem for our residents and they pay their council tax and expect the roads to be repaired. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bradwell. councillor Delks is the next person.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. As councillor Hill said, I think it was, at the start of the debate, it was a massive issue in the elections and I'm testament to that, as you, as you'll know. I was one of a number of people who won seats from the, from your party on that very issue in May. As I've spoken to councillor Davie, as he knows about the particular issue I campaigned on, it hasn't been sorted yet in my, in my division, but I know you're looking at it, councillor Davie, and perhaps we could talk some more about it. So that, you know, that was the election. The election was, a lot of people were concerned about the failure to deal with potholes adequately. I actually spoke, I support most of what's in this motion, I've got to say. And why wouldn't I? Because of the, you know, given the result that I got. I did speak to my MP about the particular issue of the money that was stopped last year, which didn't seem very good, and I challenged him on it personally. And his answer was, but the Lincolnshire County Council's got plenty in reserves, they can get it out of reserves. And of course, that's what actually happened, that's what you, you had to do and I appreciate that you did do that last year. But I think, so there are questions about reserves that need to be looked at. I know you, you know, we have to have adequate reserves, I accept that. But when the government are coming back to us saying, but you've got all this money in reserve, why don't you spend it on roads? That's what they seem to be saying. So I'd appreciate some, some, some comments on that. I do support the motion though, until it gets to item three, the third bullet point, and then it is, it's really doing what councillor Davie said in, Davies said, in answer to councillor Keely's question earlier, well, if we, if we don't do this, where will we find the money? And finding the money means cuts to other services. And I'm not sure, there's, there's no detail in here about what cuts to other services are we going to be looking at if we don't get this money for highways this time? So I'd, I'd like to know a bit more about that before I actually vote, if that's possible. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you councillor Delks. Right, I'll go on to councillor Marfleet then. councillor Marfleet, next one.
Thank you, chairman. Well, I completely, fully support this. I mean, we are a rural area, but food, agriculture, we are the breadbasket and it all has to operate around unclassified roads, small roads, back roads, and those are the areas that suffer with budget cuts. We have come a long way and there's still much to do, as we've all said. This has serious implications and it doesn't just end here. We've got massive implications with adult social care and the new reforms and it's just more pressure and pressure. But there's one thing for sure, everybody uses our highways in Lincolnshire. And it is only right that we get this fair funding for our roads, so I welcome this motion. It might just be that we ought to send our Prime Minister's new baby, a little Tonka toy with a wheel missing and saying, apologise, we've just hit a pothole along the way. But anyway, welcome this, thank you.
Thank you for that councillor Marfleet. Right, councillor Mrs Overton.
Thank you very much, I enjoyed that comment. I would like to support this motion. Highways, as we said, are really important because we are talking about people's lives. We are talking about safety on the roads. How many cyclists are pushed to the edge of the road as a vehicle goes by and find that they're in a pothole? That may be going, a vehicle going fast, you're on a 60 mile an hour road, a car is entitled to go 60 miles an hour. So it is absolutely vital that the whole road is repaired, the potholes, but also the edges, which tend to fall away. So I really feel that it's absolutely vital that this money is spent on highways. And therefore, we need to make sure that this government provides it. They have left us in the lurch in that they have encouraged us to increase development, increase growth. That's what we're all supposed to be aiming for. I would like to say economic wellbeing, but it's not, it's growth. More housing, more traffic, more lorries, but cutting the budget to support those roads. In our transport plan, it doesn't talk about reducing traffic, it talks about increasing how traffic is increasing, because the traffic, the transport plan is designed to support growth. What we should be doing is making sure that we are supporting wellbeing and that's economic wellbeing and environmental and social. And I think that that means we have to maintain the assets that we have inherited and we have to keep them safe. The point that was made earlier about improvements, I would like to support, I have seen improvements too, but it was from an extremely low base and there is a great deal more to do. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Overton. councillor Anton Danny is next.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I do believe that we live in a democratic United Kingdom. However, saying that, I think that democracy doesn't prevail because some get 58p, some get one pound, which is this funny bit. We do believe that the infrastructure is very vital and very important for any development of any corner of Lincolnshire or the country. Looking at Boston, where I came from, my town, the town has been growing in, with a fast rate. We have a lot of EU members coming to live in Boston. We have a lot of EU members coming to live in Boston, we have a lot of people moving from the south to Boston. And having a business in the town centre, you communicate with a lot of different kinds of people, and everybody will give you his opinion. The town hasn't seen a major changes on its infrastructure, and I will come back to the funniest thing, which is I heard, is the bypass, and that has been since the 1940s, as nothing has been done. So I will support this motion, because it gives us probably a little bit of hope, and we hope that Boston will get its share from these grants, if we can be successful. I look forward that our roads would be probably much bigger, much easier for any lorries, cars, or any kind of transport. I will look forward that Boston and the Boston residents will feel much better with the change, and I am very happy, as I said, and I'm very grateful for this motion. I will support it, and I look for a bright future for our town, Boston, and the surrounding of the borough, and also Lincolnshire. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dyer. Councillor Rob Parker.
I think the first point I'd want to make is to separate out the motion, which I'm very happy to support, from the debate. Because the debate has, in part at least, come to the conclusion about which is the most important service. And there have been advocates of highways being more important than any other service. Now, that's not true. I mean, it's a bit like the situation, quite simply, that if you're a parent and you've got three children, to actually say which is your favourite or best child, it's the same thing. We've seen some awful things in relation to adult social care, we know that there is a serious pressure on pensioners, older people, and we've got to look at them equally as three important services, each of which the people of Lincolnshire depend on seriously. Yes, on the one hand, the motorist thinks that more money should be spent on roads, yes, the parent says more money should be spent on education and teaching, and yes, the older person says more money should be spent on adult social care services. And I think we've got to put that argument to bed. It does manifest itself in the way that we actually budget, because the argument could easily be used, that for example, when government cuts our grant, that we can quickly prop it up with balances, and there's a question that's got to be asked and addressed, and certainly discussions with MPs, as to whether the size of our balances is indeed handicapping us from getting what we might call a proper share of the national cake. And it's right for councillor Hill to point out the question of the East Midlands getting much more, only just over half the amount of money per pound that other parts of the country get. So we need to be thinking about, from the East Midlands councils' point of view, and both councillor Hill and myself are involved in the East Midlands councils, whether or not we ought to be taking that forward at another level, to get the wider number of MPs in the East Midlands to be promoting that argument. But to come back to the motion itself, I think that we do recognise the importance of roads, and them being maintained. Secondly, we recognise that it's particularly important for people who are travelling longish distances in rural areas. But let's not forget, urban areas have their issues as well, and I've not heard anybody yet mention urban issues, but essentially, we find it in towns just as infuriating as people do in the countryside, as it were. So, yes, Labour will be supporting, but can we just get some realisation that all the services that we deliver are important? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Parker, thank you for that. Councillor Stephen Rowe.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As the ward member for the Hycam forum, we have a large amount of concrete-based roads, which have proven very challenging to work out how the repairs are going to be done. The 12 and a half million we took out of reserves last time, I'm delighted to say, has meant that there is the funds to be able to look at and repair some of these concrete-based roads, especially the ones in Hycam. If we don't support this motion, and we don't get this money, everybody else's concrete-based roads and the rest in North Hycam aren't going to be repaired, and they are failing rapidly. Historically, I think they were all laid at a similar sort of time, and they are failing at a similar sort of time. With regard to reserves, we've took 12 and a half million out once, it's not something we can do again. If you take 12 and a half million out again, and we have a need within children's services or within adult services, then the money won't be there. We need to make the government stomp up what is required for us to have at least usable roads. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rowe. Right, councillor Smith, next on the...
Thank you, Chairman. Before I speak, I draw members' attention to my DPI in relation to working for Thirwoodley part-time. I believe, I fully support the motion. Just a point of clarification, Thirwoodley has publicly stated in the press and also written to the Treasury that this cut in the road grant that we received is totally unacceptable. It's not just here in Lincolnshire. Rural England for far too long has been the poor relation, and enough is enough. There is an issue of fairer funding, this is not just Lincolnshire, this is provincial England has been a poor relation. I fully echo councillor Maughan's point, I live in a very rural division, and I'm very proud to, but the issue is, we have very, as councillor Bradwell said, unclassified roads that often don't receive the attention because they're deemed unclassified unless people use them. That does not mean they're not important, and I appreciate councillor Davies has only got a certain amount of money to work with, and I would certainly like to pay tribute to him and the highways team around them, because there has been repairs in very small roads, certainly in my patch that I've been pushing for for a very long time. I think, going back to councillor Overton's point, it's not just cyclists that have issues with roads. I lost my late father on Lincolnshire's roads, so I know how dangerous these roads can be. Yes, there was adverse weather that day, but that doesn't mean it's just adverse weather. Regularly on my travels, I'm driving and I will see on a very, what appears to be a very straight road, a car has gone off to the side. Fortunately, I've not been there to see what's happened, but I hope the occupant has been okay, it was previous before I was there. I fully support the motion. I think that we need to tie this in, not with the motion necessarily, but with wider work around fairer funding, and I think that it's time provincial England got its fair share of the cake. And the excuse of the government to use your reserves is totally not realistic, we have an adult social care burden which we have to cover, not the NHS, which in comparison to ourselves is actually a very cash-rich department, not that it has money to burn, because no department does, I appreciate that. But we really need to have a conversation of who is responsible for what, because that is relevant to this discussion. I think there is a serious discussion to have in adult social care, as councillor Marfleet has alluded to, with the reform, but also who pays for it. And I will fully support the motion, and I hope that there is actually some traction on this, because enough's enough, and we need our fair share. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Smith. Councillor Gibson is...
Thank you, Chairman. As stated by a few people, I think during the election, this was one of the hot topics. I fully expected to come here and be critical of the ruling party on this topic, however, I do like to say it as I see it, and I don't want to be critical. So far, all I've been met with from councillor Davies is helpfulness, we've done some work between the Holbridge and Spalding routes, and I've found it very helpful. The reporting app I find fantastic, I use it on a weekly basis, and I've got to say, our local highways manager, although new in post, has been exceptional. So I'd just like to say thank you for those bits so far, and I can't criticise it. Sometimes the feeling from South Holland is that the money migrates towards the city, so if we are successful and this money does stay as it should be, can I just enter a plea that South Holland isn't forgotten, and that we look after all areas? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Right, councillor Alison Austin would like to speak now.
Thank you, Chairman. I too will be supporting this motion. Mention has been made of children walking, sorry, cyclists, but I'm actually sticking up as well for children who have to walk to school. Now, some, my own division, it's got a mixture of urban, suburban, you name it, but it also has got some very, very rural parts, including the winding set of roads, that, very rural roads, to the east of the A16 that go down towards the marsh. And those roads are winding because they follow the old drainage pattern that determines the roads in a lot of this county. But this may be a very rural area, and people live here and there, very few actual communities, because the nature of, historical nature of agriculture is that there would be a couple of employees' cottages somewhere and a couple somewhere else, and not everyone has two cars. Now, why do we need, what's special about these? Right, some people moan about, oh, it's the size of these, the machinery, but remember, this part of Lincolnshire, this part of the country, our prime industry is agriculture. And I liken these roads to roads that you would find in an industrial estate. It is one gigantic rural industrial estate. Would you expect a child of 10 or even 12 to wander through an industrial estate with no footway anywhere? And this is my issue, we mustn't forget that those vehicles that use it, that huge machinery, is there for a purpose. It's there for, our economy is there to help feed the nation. And I think this is overlooked. So I'm just sticking up for these people, these children, who are just the wrong side of the dividing line as regards whether or not you get free transport to school, and in fact, whether you can afford to pay for transport. So this is yet another group of people that I think are forgotten. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor. Thank you councillor Austin. Councillor Paul Skinner.
Thank you. Well, following that, I have actually received a petition very recently from Station Road, Old Leake, where the children that have to travel to school have to stand on basically the side of the road. There's nowhere structured for them even to stand in bad weather. That's without getting into the issues of the three-mile limit, etc. But we're here to discuss this motion, and I will very much support this. Richard has a tall order, he has something like five and a half thousand miles of road, I believe, five and a half thousand miles. And in business, to stay the same is to go backwards, but we're asking him to go backwards to the tune of 12 and a half million. That's a tall order. This county only receives, I think it's, we're the second worst-funded county in the whole of England, and yet we provide most of its food, as said. And we have the food valley, just to maintain our food valley, we need to be improving our roads. And I'm very grateful for the recent LCC bid, and thanks very much, Richard, to the team for the improvements between Boston and Spalding. That's fantastic. And I wholeheartedly agree with your approach, right first time, you're doing it in every other form of engineering. So I think the hot boxes and the way forward is the way. I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Skinner. Councillor Tom Ashton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I am very happy to support this motion, representing as I do a division with a considerable number of C and B-class roads. And I think the fundamental point of this is making sure that the ear of government is listening to Lincolnshire, as it rightly should do. And we see this in the questions asked councillor Davy earlier today, and we see this in highways, that these are issues, these are relatively small amounts of money for government, they require very little attention in terms of the attention span of government, but they make a huge, huge difference to us here in Lincolnshire, be that in terms of straightforward money, or be that in changes to regulation, changes in tweaks to legislation from time to time. And we need that ear of government to be listening to our concerns and our requests here. Councillor Austin referred to agricultural machinery. Actually, agricultural machinery has grown enormously in size and capacity over the last 20 years. And I would argue that the industrial nature of some of our, the almost industrial scale of some of our agriculture would suggest that that equipment, that machinery, might now be in a position to start paying a contribution towards the effect it has on our highways. But that's just one of those areas where we could do with government listening to concerns that affect us here in Lincolnshire. And I hope very much, Mr Chairman, that the effect of this resolution, of this motion will be to give effect to that. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Ashton. Councillor Tom Dyer.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. And I think before I make my comments, just referring back to councillor Danny's contribution, you mentioned Boston being a town on several occasions, and I'm sure the whole council warmly welcomes the Boston City bid, so hopefully very soon you'll be referring to Boston as a city, Lincolnshire's second city. But I think it is important, this isn't just about motorists, although motorists use the road quite a bit, obviously, it's about cyclists, it's about pedestrians. And actually, there was some fantastic work done by LCC in my division on Station Road in Waddington earlier this year, and that was to improve the footpath. So actually, this doesn't just impact residents, so we should get behind this to encourage modal shift for our residents who want to use greener forms of transport. And it's great to hear as well from councillor Parker's statement that the Labour group will be supporting this as well. I'm just curious, can you define Labour group? Is that all of you, or just the three of you? I'm just curious as to what the Labour group is, or is it the Socialist Opposition? I'm unsure what we refer to you as. And it's great to see, I've just seen councillor Baxter's been tweeting away about this item, I'm pleased to see that he's been listening. But I think, what comes to the, what I conclude on this, Mr Chairman, is that Lincolnshire does get a poor deal from government, but I believe it's because of the lack of devolution that we have. I, you know, you see places like the West Midlands, for instance, where highway funding is significantly higher, they've got an advocate such as Andy Street, who's standing up for the West Midlands, whereas we in the East Midlands and Lincolnshire do not have a mayor. So there must be a question there, what happens moving forward? And I note from the levelling up white paper that was leaked in The Independent, government will be looking at unitary authorities and mayorities across the country, and I do hope that if this is the case, Lincolnshire moves swiftly to have a unitary authority in Lincolnshire and a mayor, because that is one way of saving money, Mr Chairman, by cutting the bureaucracy and spending that on our highways, adult social care, and children's care as well, Mr Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you for that councillor Dyer. Right, I haven't got any more members indicated to speak, so I'm coming back to councillor Hill now to sum up.
Yeah, thank you very much. I thought that was an interesting and good debate, and welcome the, I think, the support, unanimous support, I hope, which has been indicated. I think in terms of, I think, just like to start with, trust in politicians is probably a big issue at the moment, shall we say, for various reasons. And I think in terms of councils, in particular this council, I think we've always been very careful to deliver on our promises. And not only was it in the ruling group's manifesto, I don't think I saw anybody's leaf, opposition or otherwise, which didn't have a big section on concerns about the road. So I think it's very important for us to make sure we are listening to our voters, and we are trying to deliver them in that sense. But I think councillor Parker's right, I mean, all this needs to be considered in the round, and we do provide lots of services, vital services, which, I'm pleased to say, as I said in my preamble, that I think we can all take pride in the fact, despite the financial challenges we've faced over the years, we do deliver good services, in particular for those services which are of a safeguarding nature, shall I say. So I think he is right to point that out, and we need to do it. Councillor Delks talked about reserves, and as I tried to explain in my first speech, is that the reserves are there, but we're part of the plan as we know it at the moment, and we haven't got the settlement yet, we will be using those reserves to actually balance the book over the next few years. Actually, there is an argument if... Actually, there is an argument, if Andrew Crookham was here, would also say that in terms of reforms in the future, although those reserves sound high, in terms of an annual budget of three-quarters of a billion pounds, they're not actually that high. But certainly, there isn't an easy option, an easy lever to pull to say, we'll just do that and we'll solve the problem. And it's very important that, and I'm very disappointed to hear about the comments from one of our MPs, frankly, I think perhaps he needs to get himself up to speed a bit more, and I'll make the effort to have a conversation with him to get him to understand, hopefully, how we do try and balance our books. But it's, we are going to need those reserves in the future. I think councillor Dilks also talked about the third element of the identify solutions. And I think that's important, because let's hope we get the money, and let's hope it, because it's not just an issue for Lincolnshire, it's an issue for other counties. We're particularly vulnerable because we have a large rural network, five and a half thousand miles, as being stated, we have a relatively low population. So it's probably a big problem, it's probably a problem in Surrey, but it's not the biggest problem, is it, as in Lincolnshire? And I think we also need to make sure we get others to help nationally, the LGA, who I think have been quiet on this at the moment. I'm trying to work with the CCN to get them to, as a national representative body, to get some momentum behind this campaign. And I think we will show a lead on that, and hopefully others will follow and do that. In terms of councillor Dilks, I come back to that, the third element of identify solutions. Well, one solution is just take the hit on the twelve million for roads. I don't think any of us found, and look, there are all sorts of other, or I think councillor Kelly said, well, if we don't get the money for roads, another solution is find savings. Then you start to about where else will you find the savings? So it's not only important for the roads, it's important for all of our services, because we might be left with very difficult choices, and we don't want to have to say, we're going to cut something else to make sure that our roads are clear. I see my time, I apologise.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Thank you. Right, I'm going to move on to the vote on this motion now. Would all those members in favour of the motion please indicate? Yeah, clearly carried. I don't think there's anybody against, but is there anybody against? No, and no abstentions? No, I didn't think there were. So that was a unanimous decision then. Thank you. We'll then move on to the next motion on notice from the independent group, I think it's correct. councillor Ashley Baker, Baxter, sorry, apologies, councillor Ashley Baxter is moving this, so over to you, councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chair. And with your permission, I'd like to thank councillor Dyer for promoting my Twitter account, which has already seen movers and shakers from Lincolnshire join as a result of his comment, I'm sure. So you'll notice that, perhaps unlike me, this motion is short and sweet. It is the job of the opposition to identify potential areas of improvement and to constructively criticise the performance of the council and its executive, but this doesn't always mean ranting and moaning. Obviously, the council has competing priorities and also needs to ensure our services are run efficiently and that our residents are prosperous, or at least not poverty-stricken. But no greater challenge faces the county, nor the council, nor indeed the country or the planet than the impending crisis of climate change. I attended the climate summit a few weeks ago at the showground, and I was pleased to hear the progress the council has made with regard to the green agenda. For example, reductions in carbon emissions against the baseline, and plans to work with districts and parishes to get trees planted in their hundreds and thousands. That's great. The cynic in me would point out that some of the recommendations, some of the reductions in carbon dioxide are what you might call windfall savings. Firstly, from national and international innovations over which the council has little control, for example, the shift in UK electricity mix from coal to gas, which has made us all greener without changing any of our behaviour at all. Secondly, the result of cuts to public services. For example, closing the libraries and turning off streetlights has a positive effect on carbon emissions, but it's not, this is not the time to reprise any of the arguments concerning those decisions. I understand the council has not yet declared a climate emergency. Personally, I think it should declare a climate emergency, but frankly, I'm not so worried about the council making declarations as taking the difficult and practical actions that are needed to prevent catastrophic climate change and to mitigate the increasing effects of climate change. Consequently, on behalf of the independent group, I am pleased to propose this short motion, which seeks only to bolster the council's proactive response to climate change. The recommendations seek to ensure that carbon reduction opportunities are always front of mind in council's decision-making. And so I'm pleased to propose the motion. It is deliberately apolitical in its content, and I hope it will be supported unanimously by you all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Baxter. Come to councillor Cleaver now, her understanding is going to...
Thank you, I second the motion and would like to reserve my right to speak later in the debate.
Thank you. Right, councillor Davy.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. I'm going to propose an amendment to this motion on behalf of the Conservative group, which will be shown on the screen shortly. And in so doing, I accept councillor Baxter's intention to try and tighten up certain things. But if he had spoken to me before he drafted the motion, I would have been able to tell him quite clearly that there is work already underway within the council as regards sustainability impact assessments, which is going to be a requirement imposed upon the council by the new Environment Act, which has just been given consent. So we are currently waiting for the provisions of that act to be put through as statutory instruments, as we all know, that's how it works with government. And when we receive those, we will bring forward sustainability impact assessments across the areas of the council business that needs to be judged in that way. So as you will see, I'm not going to strike out Ashley's, councillor Baxter's preamble, but there are five sections to our proposed amended motion, which I will read and just talk about briefly. Firstly, I want to remind the council, we've done a lot of work here, and it isn't just by accepting changes to electricity markets. I've got to remind council, five per cent of our own energy is produced by our own solar panels on our own rooftops. So noting that, success of the council in setting that sixty-eight per cent reduction target against our own nineteen ninety baseline, which we're going to deliver, and I mean we will deliver, by twenty twenty-five, five years ahead of the government's own twenty thirty target. Obviously noting, as I've just said, that the new environment bill has just passed its final reading, and that now places a number of new requirements in terms of sustainability reporting onto all government departments and onto this council and all councils going forward, once the enabling legislation passes into law. Support the work that's already underway in my sustainability team, which will then align this council with all government requirements, and then as part of the decision-making process across the organisation where it is applicable. This is to be enacted as soon as the formal provisions of the Environment Act are communicated by government to this authority. So I can't say it's a particular date, but as soon as we get those provisions, it will be enacted. And the final part, if we can scroll up, ensure also that the process that we currently have of reporting on all our carbon management plan delivery continues to go to the relevant scrutiny committees and to the executive. So that is our amended motion. I hope councillor Baxter and his seconder can accept that. I think it's a sensible way forward, bearing in mind we have new provisions we have to address as a council. And I therefore move the amendment, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Davy. Do we have a second, or a blue councillor Dyer?
Yes, Chairman, I second and reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I've got councillor Parker, who would like to speak on the amendment.
Yeah. I suppose I'd start off by saying I really don't think much to what's happened just now with that amendment being moved and put on to the screen. I really don't think much to it. I think we're developing relationships between groups that actually could mean advance notice being given. We've all had the paper, haven't we? With plenty of notice to be able to read the order of proceedings. We know exactly what councillor Baxter was proposing. We've had a few seconds of notice that this is what's going to happen, and I think it really doesn't do any credit to the Conservative group in this respect. I would have welcomed a contrast, a line-by-line contrast from the mover of the amendment, to say, this is why we're doing this compared to this. That was absent. All it was, was a promotion of a particular Conservative proposal without any justification for it in comparison to what we've seen before. And I think we ought to, at leaders' meetings, have a discussion about the way this has been handled by councillor Davy.
Councillor Hill, is it a point of explanation?
Yeah, just on those comments, you know, apologise to councillor Parker, we should have a protocol of these, and I hadn't realised, there was an oversight that, you know, normally after our group meetings in the morning, we tell each other what's going on, I fully accept his comments. All I would say, I know it's not ideal, I think the thing makes pretty clear what the changes are, because some stuff is, some words are deleted and others are added, but I do take the point, and we need to do better in future.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Right, so we got, that's councillor Parker and councillor Dilks is indicating.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm speaking against the amendment, for which I would say councillor Davy did tell the proposer and seconder immediately before the meeting, but I do take councillor Parker's and your apology, councillor Hill, I think we can do a bit better than that. We certainly didn't get the, on this side of, in the independent group, we didn't get the actual, what the changes were that you were seeking to do. I am disappointed, I've got to say, because this motion, as councillor Baxter said in his opening remarks, it's a very simple motion, it's non-political, it's seeking to support the council's green master plan and the aspirations within it. And I am disappointed, and what councillor Davy is saying is, oh, yes, we're going to do that anyway when the legislation comes through, but we're waiting now. Well, why are we waiting? Let's get on with it. This is supposed to be Lincolnshire, we're supposed to be showing the way, and here's an opportunity to actually do that. What would stop us today, councillor Davy, actually adopting what councillor Baxter is proposing, i.e. that in our reports, when we're considering changes, in our reports we put in a climate change impact assessment? Why, what's stopping us doing that today? Absolutely nothing. Let's get on and do it and show the way. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dilks. Have we anybody else wishing to speak on the amendment? Yeah, okay. councillor Cleaver, thank you. It's councillor Cle, councillor Baxter, as mover of the main motion, you get to speak at the end of the debate on the amendment, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
councillor Cleaver.
I must say, I'm disappointed that I've only just seen the wording of the amendment myself. In the earlier debate about cuts to our roads budget, councillor Hill said that trust in our politicians is low at the moment, and that as a council, we are careful to deliver on our promises. Our green master plan is a promise, it's a promise that we made to the electors of Lincolnshire, and so is the carbon reduction plan. If you make promises, you have to show to people that you're acting on them and that you're keeping those promises. As councillor Dilks has pointed out, there's nothing to stop us now making sure that we monitor all of the decisions we are considering across the council against the master plan that we have all agreed on. And so I must oppose the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cleaver. councillor, Mrs. Overton now.
Thank you. I think we're speaking on the amendment first, and then we come back to speak on the motion. But on the amendment, it's a shame that I think there's only one word or two words that have been kept. It's very like a different motion altogether. So it says includes, ah, which I think is about the only words I can see.
Impact assessment.
And impact assessment, right. So it's three, a few words that are the same, which I think is disappointing, because most of the motion is about notes, notes, supports, and those things are part of a preamble. We don't normally need all of us here to note something. That's not normally what we've driven all this way or come this way to do. So I'm very disappointed that it's so watered down, and then to suggest to do nothing until the environmental bill tells us not to, that's really strange. If you look at all of our papers, we already have a section about the impact on equalities. That's normal, nobody, you know, it's not a problem. We just check that whatever we're doing is in line with our overall ambitions. So I think this is a real shame, because it was a very simple, good motion, and it seems the same to have just made it political, really, which is a pity. I think the underlying principle is that what we should be doing, which we want to do, is to check that each decision we make is taking us where we want to go. And we want to go towards net zero by twenty fifty, this council has agreed. And all we're saying is, can we please have a check on that at each decision? Simple. Thank you.
Good thing, councillor Overton. councillor Brockway.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Basically, I mean, I've got not a lot of problems with much of this motion. What I've got an issue with is that it needs a little bit of meat on the bones. You're asking for a change in process when we are a long way through a process. That's not a problem, because it's good to look at the processes all the time and to check that we're doing them well. We're already working very hard towards carbon management and zero carbon. So what I'd like to know is exactly what these changes you're asking for would take, how much work would this take? How would this be implemented? Such, you know, for asking a climate change impact assessment on every report, on every committee, on every decision, evaluate them in the evaluation of the consistency of the report recommendations. I think a lot of that is very, very praiseworthy, and I think we are working towards it. But I think you've got to be careful about imposing something that doesn't have flexibility, that can damage the work that is being done already. I think what we need to do is take it away and talk about it. I'm going to vote against it at the moment, but I do think that there's a lot of merit in what you say, and certainly in what councillor Mrs. Overton says about adding bits and pieces to reports. But I think we need to know first, what will that take? How much work are we talking about? What changes? What actual impact will it have? So at the moment, I'm going to vote against it, but I certainly do take on board what you're saying here. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brockway. councillor Park in.
Thank you, Chairman. In some ways, I've got a lot of sympathy with what councillor Brockway has just said in terms of his needing to understand the process of the, of the motion. But I also think fundamentally, we need a deep understanding of and a recognition of where we are now. There is no doubt that we are in a hole, we are in a hole as a species, whether it be public health, whether it be the environmental catastrophe potentially facing, we are in a hole, and we need to find ways to dig our way out as quickly as we possibly can. So I will be voting in favour of this motion, because I think anything that means that we start acting quickly and that we focus our brains on acting quickly is exactly where we need to be now. I also recognise what councillor Davy was saying, that, you know, we also need to be responsive to the government and what government expects us to do. But I would always say on this, just as we do with children's services, we do more, and we do more, and we do it quickly, because we do not have the time. I have got, as you know, four kids who I'm incredibly proud of, and what I am... I have got, as you know, four kids who I'm incredibly proud of and what I am really pleased about them is that they hold me to account about my behaviour on these issues because, and by God, do they. Do we have some discussions and some quite meaty arguments and they have made me change my actions. I have to say how it is lovely to see you all and it is great to be here, but what is the carbon footprint of us all rocking up here today? What is that?
Could I just come in, councillor Parkin? I just wanted to clarify that we're talking, debating the amendment at the moment.
Yes, absolutely. And obviously the amendment is about...
And I think previously we've strayed over.
I have to disagree with that because the amendment is fundamentally about carbon management and carbon reduction and this is what I am saying, that I recognise we're here because legislatively we have to be here, but I just think there was an opportunity for us to discuss, to debate, to put pressure on government, to really, really change how local government works. And I'm grateful for anything that anybody brings forward, whether it be the active travel fund for Loaf, whether it be this, that really focusing our brains on doing more than we have to and doing it quicker.
Thank you councillor Parkin. Councillor Tom Smith and then councillor Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. It's just a very brief point of clarification. Councillor Overton said that the amendment means we do nothing and that's what councillor Davy said. I don't believe that's personally what he said at all. I believe what he, and councillor Davy, please correct me if I'm wrong, what he says and what the amendment is seeking to do is wait because the legislation may supersede what we actually, what the amendment is seeking to do and we are then creating more work for our officers on top of what we're going to be legally required to do. We may, the amendment may seek to do more, it may seek to do less, but if it seeks for us to do less and the legislation comes out and we then have to do more, we've just doubled the work of our officers and our officers personally, I think, have enough work to do in the day-to-day running of council and services. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Smith. Councillor Hill.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I just think that, to me, actions speak louder than words and our carbon management plan and reductions are very challenging. I do get frustrated because whenever I go to a lot of these debates about carbon, climate change, nobody ever wants to talk about specifics. It's all airy-fairy stuff and we don't really want to talk about the difficult consequences of some of these decisions. So this council since 2008 has taken this matter very, very seriously and is delivering on carbon reduction. So I don't think anybody can accuse us of ignoring the issue. I mean, councillor Overton said, oh, it's nothing at all. I'm sorry, it is quite a bit because when you read what's required, such impact assessments to include evaluation of the consistency reporting, report recommendations with the council's green plan, together with a specific statement on the carbon neutrality otherwise of the, that is an onerous liability which is put on our offices. So if we follow this to the letter, every single thing we do, we'll have to have a bunch of officers looking at it, looking at the, which isn't an easy subject to deal with. So I just think in terms of waiting for the, what the legislation actually says and being proportionate, and the key thing to me, it's not about words and having bits, added bits on to recommendations, which we all get anyway, it's about the delivery and it's about the delivery of our carbon reduction. That's what matters. That is measured and audited very carefully by scrutiny committees in this council. Every year we have to report, so that's the place where we need to make sure we are delivering. Adding a load of bureaucracy on to it in itself will probably be actually anti-carbon neutral.
Thank you councillor Hill. I've got councillor Danny now.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'll be very brief. We do have a plan, we do have goals, we do have a duty towards our communities. Therefore, I think our main tools of monitoring the progress of our fight against the climate change is through scrutiny and also through the full council. So we can put questions forward and we can get answers. And through the scrutiny, we can express our feelings, we can express our concerns in those committees and then it goes to the executive decisions. And I think we don't need to be friendly and say, oh, it's just a simple question and we can go in it. I totally agree, it's very simple, but as I said, we have scrutiny and we have the full council. Our duty as councillors is to monitor and follow up with every decision made in these chambers and that's what we have to do and that's what we are elected for. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Danny. Councillor Tom Ashton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I am very happy to speak in support of the amendment as I believe it strikes a good balance between recognising what we are already doing as a council and that is clearly showing leadership through the green master plan and recognises that legislation is still not yet settled on this matter, it's still a moving feast. And I would echo the point just made by councillor Hill that there is always a danger in local government seeking to gold plate whatever is coming out of government simply because it seems to be the virtuous thing to do. Doing the virtuous thing does have a cost and we've heard in debate throughout this morning that we have a finite resource as a council and there are always going to be huge pressures on that resource, be that highways, children's services or adult care. And if we are to find additional resource to effectively gold plate climate change regulations and monitoring and everything else, then that is going to have cost pressures elsewhere on the revenue budget. And it's worth bearing in mind that a side effect, I have pains of channeling my inner Luddite on this, but a side effect of all of these efforts is that there is an entire industry out there currently feathering its nest in plan-making, in advising and monitoring, in auditing climate targets, which in itself will have the carbon footprint of a small petrostate. So we have to bear this in mind. It all comes with a cost. We have to be sensible, which I feel this amendment succeeds in doing, in striking the balance between what is right for our communities and what is achievable and affordable for this authority. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Ashton and now councillor Skinner is indicating.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'm going to wholeheartedly agree with councillor Ashton. It has to be balanced and gold plating things, all it does is tie things up with bureaucracy. We're in a place at the moment where we're waiting for the Act of Parliament to come in place to give us some guidance, but it's a little bit more complex than that because we all, all the technology that's going with everything at the moment, that's also advancing at a pace and so are the costs going down. So to force things in a particular way at a time when there's so much change, I think it's only right to support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Skinner. I've got no one else indicating, so I'm going to come back to councillor Dyer and then I'll come, he reserved his right to speak. Oh, sorry. Councillor Parker, sorry, I haven't got...
I've spoken already in a sort of dialogue with councillor Hill about the appropriateness.
Sorry, I do apologise.
But I'm not sure, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a brief statement, but I'm not sure whether it's to do with the amendment or the actual motion. And it's really to do, I think it's to do with the amendment and it's the final number five, which is on the screen. I'll be very brief. That seems to me to be fundamental and that's perhaps where I disagree with councillor Hill in the sense that he's right to say that we have a report every year which looks at the environment and our, what we've done, but it seems to me that there is an important issue, that the process of reporting on carbon management infiltrates the whole of the organisation. I say that in the way that we know that finance dominates this council's attitude towards spending and what we have when we have, every paper that goes to any scrutiny committee has financial implications immediately, right there. We need to know how much this proposal is going to cost. If we want to give a greater priority to and get across to our audience the impact of what we're doing, then we have to get it into the minds and hearts of the whole workforce and you can't do any better than at each scrutiny committee when there's a paper there saying, impact on our carbon management plan. It's as simple as that. And that's why I think that is particularly important for us to maintain in the way that I described it, which is to scrutiny committees and not as, and as well, an annual report.
Thank you. Right, I'm going to go to councillor Dyer now to, he reserved his right to speak.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman, and obviously I'll be supporting the amendment. I know there's been some mixes up. The amendment made by councillor Davy and I think ultimately the reason we've had to make this amendment to address the concerns from the socialist benches is that because it just shows, the motion itself shows a complete lack of political awareness from the opposition. This is already going to be as part of the Environment Act, which is going to be with us very, very soon. So I'd just like to say that I wholeheartedly agree with the comments made by councillor Smith and councillor Ashton. I don't want to stray away from what councillor Hill said in respect to councillor Parker's comments initially, but I think the controlling group on this authority is very generous with opposition councillors, whereas if you go over the road, I'm the leader of the opposition there and I don't even get replies to emails from the leader councillor Metcalf. So councillor Hill offers much more courtesy to opposition members than I'm used to on the city council and I think it's totally within our gift to amend an amendment, amend a motion when it comes to this council. So I'm sorry that you're upset councillor Parker, but it's totally within the rules. In terms of the comments made by councillor Delks, again, the lack of political awareness within your motion is the reason that we've had to make this amendment. This will all be coming through as part of the Environment Act, as councillor Davy made very clear. And I'm pleased that councillor Cleaver made some positive remarks of the positive work that LCC has done as part of the green master plan and I think, I know I saw councillor Baxter at the conference and councillor Delks may have been there as well. And really, just to sum up, councillor Overton, I was pleased that you were at the COP conference. I hope you cycled up there and you didn't drive. But, 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 but overall, Mr Chairman, I will obviously be supporting the amendment because this is the common sense approach. As the Environment Act comes into law, we'll be able to look at it more closely and then make the improvements necessary. And Chairman, I have to, I should have declared an interest, I should have declared an interest. So I do apologise. I'm 25, so I do hope to be alive in 2050 when we hit net zero. So I'm especially keen that we do achieve these targets. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Dyer. And if we could refrain from shouting out, please, while somebody's speaking. Thank you. Move to councillor Davy now because you've got the right to sum up on your amendment and then I'll come to councillor Baxter after that, because he moved the main amendment and gets to speak.
A point of order, if I may, Mr Chairman. I'm just looking at the, forgive me if I'm wrong, but I'm just looking at the notes at the back of the Order of Proceedings and it says that the mover of the amendment has no right of reply to the debate on his or her amendment.
Sorry, I've been misguided, sorry. We'll come to councillor Baxter then.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you to those who have contributed. I mean, I'm sorry councillor Dyer, that you haven't had an email from someone else in another council, not really relevant to what we're talking about here. I think this amendment is, I struggle to see what the purpose of it is other than political, that there must be some kind of decree that no opposition motion or suggestion should pass unchallenged or unamended within its life. Could we have the, I think I'm the only per, I don't know how many of you have got this, whether or not it's been emailed to you, but I might be the only person that's actually got the amendment in front of me and it does help. So what has actually changed? Gratefully, you've left in the top measure and then underneath that, number one, we note, great, we can note whatever we like, we can have statistics, we can have reports, whatever, note all that stuff, note as much as you like. Number two, we also note, yes, great, let's note stuff. Number three, we support what we're already doing, yes, we all agree that what we're doing is great and I said that in the, I wasn't attacking the council for its green credentials, I was careful not to do that. We're doing a great job, let's support that, I'm all for it. But then we come to what's actually changing in this and as councillor Overton says, you've left in four words, four words from the original motion. So you've changed it, you're trying to change it beyond all recognition, just basically for the sake of it. And to quote a high-profile environmentalist, blah, blah, blah. Councillor Brockway said, what we need to do is to take it away and talk about it. Blah, blah, blah. We need to crack on with it. And councillor Hill said, we need to be specific, well, he was kind of contradictory, if I dare say that, that he said we need to have specific recommendations. This amendment, sorry, this motion is actually saying, let's have specific climate change impact assessments.
Point of order. I did not say we should have specific recommendations. What I said was, having specific recommendations at this stage and please of councillor, blah, 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 I think we can hopefully get away from that sort of childish behaviour. Yeah, we have a, we try and have orderly debates in this council and I think everybody just needs to, you know, stick to that principle.
Thank you councillor Hill.
Thank you for the intervention, but I'm not going to take lessons from the conservative benches about being childish in this debate. In fact, this amendment in its very fundament is childish, in my opinion. So what you're basically saying is that we should wait for the government. Plenty of people are waiting for the government, the Windrush victims are waiting, the Grenfley quarry are waiting and it's all very well saying, it's all very well saying soon and very soon, but what you're saying is that if a law arrives, we will obey it. I mean, that's the very basic requirement that we should obey the law. Why don't we get ahead of the curve? Because as councillor Dyer points out, let's all meet up in the year 2050, some of us are not going to be here and who is going to hold us to account for what we're doing? If we don't get on with this properly, seriously, like adults, and look at the impact of our actions, then the world is going to die.
Yeah, thank you councillor Baxter, you're out of time. Councillor Danny, please, you don't shout out and no shouting out, there was other, another comment came while councillor Baxter was speaking.
Point of order, Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. It's not if legislation comes, legislation is coming, that is why the amendment's there. If legislation wasn't coming, then that's why...
That's not a point of order.
Apologies, Chairman.
Chairman, can we move to vote, please? I move that we move to vote.
Yeah. Right, let's get some order here. Although, I'm going to move to the vote on the amendment now. Right, all those in favour of the amendment, please indicate. Forty-four for all those against. And are there any abstentions? Just, no. Right, that was, so the amendment was clearly carried then, so that now becomes the main proposal, the substantive proposal. So all those in favour now of this amendment as a substantive proposal, please indicate. That's clearly carried. All those against, just to keep the records right, any amendments, any abstentions? No. Thank you. Let's move on to the last item. I take it you want to, we'll get on and have the last item on the agenda, which is the Labour motion. And I'll move over to councillor Rob Parker to move the Labour motion. Thank you.
Fine. I take it without upsetting anybody that there's no amendment to come forward actually to take us by surprise. If I could just... I could just ask that question, I say that gently. Okay, fine. So what we're saying, in a fairly detailed way, is that there's some things that need to happen in relation to adult social care. And we know that the government are pressing ahead with it now, after a long period of time, and it does date back a long time, Dillnot report at the beginning of the last decade. Certainly matters, and we've had a small debate about the importance of highways, but adult social care is something that I think we all realise for a number of reasons. One, we've all had parents getting old, we all know people, we are going to get old ourselves. It's not just about adult social care in the sense of older people, it's about mental health issues, and it's to do with people with learning disabilities. And the governments have recently come forward with a set of proposals, and we want to take up our position as a council, to say, yes, there's a billion pounds being put forward, and that's set out in the motion, 300 million to help councils increase the range of supported housing options, 150 million for a greater adoption of technology, and 500 million for workforce development. Okay, so why are we bringing this forward for a number of different reasons? I think we've got to get across the message that adult social care matters, that it sets the tone, doesn't it? The way that we care for older people and people with learning disabilities and mental health problems reflect what we see as important as a nation. It's a matter of principle and fairness. Secondly, as a county council, we're heavily involved in delivering adult social care services because it's one of our core responsibilities. So what government wants to do, we've got an interest in it because we're probably going to be delivering most of those services. And whilst we've got this white paper in front of us at long last, some of the proposals do need amending. And we've got to look at the question of principle fairness, a matter of funding, and we want to take this case to Parliament, which is why our motion is simply to get our MPs to seek changes in the current white paper proposals. We all can go back, I think, because we've been reminded of it, Boris Johnson, two years ago, standing on the steps of Downing Street, promising that he had a solution, a strategy to fix social care services once and for all. And this paper, the adult social care paper, is, the white paper, is meant to deliver on that. But the point is, it doesn't tackle the here and now, and one of the things that I wanted to bring together is the short term, the now, the Covid-19 pandemic has had a major impact on the adult social care work, and services and money that's available. And we know that staff have left for better paid jobs in the private sector, in care homes, and delivering care at home, which is, we've now got high vacancy levels, 500 million pounds that the government's promised over three years is not enough to cover a workforce of one and a half million people. Something that you may not know about, but in the Association of Directors of Adult Care Services, people like Glenn Garrard's equivalents expressed about the current situation, unprecedented alarm as winter approaches, and said that the government must act to stabilise the system. So what we're saying is that there is a problem here and now. I don't know if we know, but a survey showed that almost 400,000 people are now waiting across the country for an assessment of their needs or the delivery of a service. And more than one and a half million hours of commissioned home care services couldn't be provided between August and October because of a lack of staff, despite a record growth in provision. So this white paper that we've got in front of us, criticisms of it mainly are focused on whether there is, A, sufficient funding made available in order to deliver realistic proposals and to make social care financially available. There's no mention in the white paper of the formula used to distribute government grant to local authorities, and it's something that has a resonance with what councillor Hill was talking about in the allocation of money to Lincolnshire. Urban areas receive 16% more per head of population in government grants for social care services than rural areas. That gap has increased from 4% in 2017 to 16% now in 2020, 21. That's not a very good example of levelling up. So for all those reasons, we're moving this amendment and looking for support. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Parker. We now then come to a second episode.
Thank you, Chairman. So I'm seconding the motion in the absence of councillor Lee. So as Keir Starmer recently said, and this is what councillor Parker said, how a country treats its elderly is a test for what sort of country it is. And this statement certainly rings true here. For many years, there's been a longstanding need to address the deep root of problems in our social care system. So I say with disappointment that the recent white paper represents a missed opportunity. Again, councillor Parker alluded to this, that when Boris Johnson became Prime Minister in 2019, he raised everyone's hopes and expectations, he promised to fix the crisis in adult social care. No one, he said, would have to sell their homes to pay for their care. For most people, their home, the house where they live, represents the largest proportion of their economic wealth, what money they could raise if they sell their house on the open market. So as a former economics teacher, I find it incomprehensible that from October 2023, no one will have to pay more than 86,000 pounds towards their personal care. My reasoning for this complete lack of understanding is based, again, on the question of fairness. Everybody knows that house prices vary widely across the country. So according to figures I looked up yesterday, average house prices in Surrey were 613,000, average house prices in Lincoln were 211,000, and in the North East, 136,000. So how can a flat rate cap of 86,000 throughout the country be fair? All taxes and charges, which are not based on the ability to pay, and this isn't, because every household will pay the same amount, is deeply regressive. And what this means is it disproportionately hits the poorer household. Someone who is worth a million will keep most of their money, and someone with much less will lose most of it. So just to finish off quoting Keir Starmer again, I'm saying that we simply cannot unload the cost of social care disproportionately on hard-working people whilst handing the benefit to the wealthiest few. So I ask this council to vote in favour of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Keighley. I've got councillor Hill.
Yeah, I think we didn't enter into the rocky territory of amendments. I think at this stage that I don't think our group can support the motion, although I do, I think there is a lot of sympathy for what the excellent layout that councillor Parker has put in in terms of the issue. We do know there is this, there are various issues, and we also know that government has some of the detail of what the government proposes in terms of not only how the money is going to be transferred from NHS to councils in three years' time, but also some of the vital details of how this will be rolled out. And I know certainly we've been talking to MPs and others in Lincolnshire, and they also are concerned about this care cap. So the trouble we'll have with the motion is, are we then saying we don't agree with the care cap? I don't know. I mean, that's the problem. Are we saying that we want the issue resolved quicker? So I just think, because it just says, we ask her to reconsider, what are we exactly asking her to reconsider? Because I think we've got to come up with, just like with the highways debate, we've got to come up with a reasoned argument as to why we need the reconsideration. It is up in the air, and one of the things, of course, is the, as part of the budget, there's a Better Care Fund, and, you know, to be very fair to the government, we get a very substantial allocation, it's the excess of 50 million now, probably nearer 60 million. So the government is making money available by other ways, but I think we all accept the care cap hasn't resolved the issue, and there's a large debate about it. But my only issue is that, you know, asking her to reconsider, is that just saying, well, forget it and we'll do something else? If, you know, I suppose we could have had a conversation earlier, but then we're into amendment territory, that we could have said, well, what could we say? You know, I would have been happy to say, let's lobby the government to actually do X, Y and Z, but just to say reconsider almost sounds like, well, you got it wrong, withdraw it. I do struggle to do that.
Thank you councillor Hill. Are we, councillor Marfleet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we know there's pressures within adults, and what sort of, the government has done is, they've at least started to address and acknowledge. It might not be exactly what everybody aspires to now or want, but it is a commitment, and he's actually started to actually look at reforming adult social care. So for that, that is a good thing. There is a sense, though, and having worked in the world of adult social care, we look at housing. We are creating a better offer in Lincolnshire with extra care housing and getting that built around the county, which is a good thing. Technology, we need to go further with technology, and actually, I believe that technology is the way to reduce social isolation, which in effect creates more issues in adult social care. Workforce, I question whether training is actually the be-all and end-all, because actually the people that work in adults actually are really dedicated. They don't need training, they just need more money and more appreciation for what actually the work that they do. Then we talk about really individuals. I think we have become a nation of laziness. We need to start taking far more accountability of our own health as we get older and our own needs. We don't know what's going to be thrown at us when we get older, we don't know what disability or how well we live, we don't prepare for it, because actually we don't know what really is going to come to every one of us at the end. But what we need to do is actually plan better, get better housing, actually look after ourselves. How many people now in our high streets have got obesity? You know, you're going to need care if you're in that state. It's time that we as a nation got fitter, better, sharper and more focused actually on our own health needs and stop piling the pressure on adult care. Adult care cannot, and nor can the NHS, carry on at the way we as a nation are going forward in this world. It will go, well, it perhaps won't go bust, it just won't have any other spare money for any other thing like a pothole. But, you know, I think, finally, Rob, there is some merit in this, but unfortunately, we've also actually already in dialogue with our MPs about raising these issues because of purely the impact of the cost which is going to have on this council. From capping and every other aspect, it will impact not only the council but individuals in Lincolnshire. So we are very much on the ball of highlighting this to our MPs so that they are actually discussing this and they can raise it. We have made awareness recently, so, you know, but at least you're on the right track anyway. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marfleet. Councillor Mrs. Overton.
Thank you. I think councillor Marfleet is going to vote for it then, on the right track, quite right. And actually, I agreed with a lot of what's just been said. Certainly, we do have to take care of ourselves, of course, but one has to bear in mind, there are still people who are in need of care, often through no fault of their own, and that is something that we have a responsibility for. That we lobbied, the Local Government Association lobbied national governments to get social care secured for the long term in terms of funding. We even did a white paper for them, because they hadn't done their, a green paper, well, we even did our own consultation for them, and got all of the people who would be responding, who know what they're talking about, right at the top, right at the sharp end, to comment on what they thought would be the best solutions. And we presented that to government on a plate. All they had to do was put it in place. They didn't. Then we went forward with what they have come forward with, putting up national insurance, which I have to say, we did find was the only way to serve, actually to get enough funding, or income tax. Only those two are really big enough to provide enough funding. So they have put up national insurance, but it's not to resolve the key problem that we need, which is the long-term funding for adult care. That money doesn't do it. What it does do is provide a subsidy for wealthier people who are currently not able to access that. So it increases the burden on what is already an unmanageable budget. The 500 million that was mentioned was for training, for wellbeing, not for wages. And I'm absolutely right with, agree with councillor Marfleet, it's not training, it's just plain wages that they want and appreciation of the job, and I think that's absolutely right. So unfortunately, I feel that the government has really just left us in the lurch here, and they're just building on sand. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Overton. Right, councillor Kev Clark.
Thank you, Chairman. Speaking in support of the Labour motion. Right, for years, people fear reaching old age and becoming ill, then entering into a care home where their assets would be used to pay for the care, the assets meaning their owns. Promises were made to solve the issue, however, the direction of change in social care was somewhat lost. The statement, no one will have to sell their owns to pay for the care costs, has faded and actually disappeared for many Lincolnshire householders. However, that's not the conclusion. If you live in other parts of the country, there you'll be rubbing your hands together. But the case here is we represent people of Lincolnshire, not the rest of the country. Therefore, clearly, show support for the motion and for the people of Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clark. Councillor Dilks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I welcome the recognition from councillor Hill and indeed councillor Marfleet that Boris's social care plan doesn't solve the problem, and that the motion is on the right track. That's a good reason in itself to vote for the motion, and it is a reasoned motion. It's not, it's not full of rhetoric, it's simply saying, let's write to the minister and ask for a rethink from Lincolnshire. Yes, we all remember Boris's first speech on the steps of Downing Street, saying he had a plan for which he promised would, and I quote, "fix the crisis in social care once and for all." But since his long-awaited plan was finally revealed, I haven't heard anyone who thinks it goes anywhere near fixing the adult social care crisis, as he said it would, apart from his own ministers, of course. Even on the other side, you know, from the Conservative ranks here, you know it's not good enough, it doesn't do it. It is a start, of course it is. What this motion is saying is, let's go back and see if we can't get something better. Quite the reverse. If you just listen to senior members of the Conservative Party nationally, I'm not actually sure if I'm allowed to say if it's okay still to call it a party, is it? I'll not mention parties, I'll say members of the Conservative gathering. Listen to people like Jeremy Hunt, you know, the former Health Secretary, is reported in the Daily Tory Graph, under the headline, "Number 10's plans failed to solve the social care crisis," warns Hunt. As well as insufficient funding, Jeremy Hunt says the plan fails to keep elderly people from bed-blocking hospital beds. And it also fails, he says, to resolve the growing recruitment crisis and the retention crisis in the low-paid social care sector. Now, we all know what he's talking about in Lincolnshire, don't we? It's not just a national problem, we are not immune to it, it's happening here. And that's why I think this motion is relevant today. But the plan is financial But the plan is financially flawed, as many Conservatives have said, because only 15% of the additional revenue in the new health and social care levy will actually reach local authorities to improve the quantity and the quality of care. Oh yeah, the health and social care levy. That's the latest manifesto busting Tory tax about to hit ordinary people to pay for some of this. Not a tax on the excess rip-off profits of companies exploiting the market in selling PCRs, and no tax either to help pay for Covid on the excess profits of the pandemic millionaires. Boris's chums, who we know were handed crony contracts to sell PPI to the NHS. But coming back to the motion, the fact is...
Yeah, it's time, it's time.
Time, I do apologise, thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. That's councillor Ashley Baxter, sorry, keep wanting to miss the excerpt. I apologise.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with councillor Marfleet on certain points. Certainly, care staff need to be better paid, and we need to address the obesity issue in this country. One way would be to improve leisure centres, or provide leisure centres, and improve cycle ways as well, because cycling is a much, much more healthy way to travel than cars. However, I don't agree with his suggestion that the people of Lincolnshire and the UK are lazy. It's often said that people have got more jobs now than they have, and people are working. And Mrs Thatcher... She... Mrs Thatcher said that people should be able to work hard in order to buy their homes, to buy their council houses, and she sold off all the, a large amount of the stock of council houses in this country to people, and people bought those houses in order that they would have something to pass on to the next generation. And what's this Conservative government doing? They're taking it away. They're saying that people will have to sell their homes that they've worked hard all their life to own, to pass on to the children, they'll have to sell those in order to pay for their care. That is not fair. That is favouring the rich over the poor. And any, it does. If you're a person with a house worth £86,000, you have to sell that house for your care, or your family do when you're gone. And if you're, yeah, all right. So your family that you've saved up to buy this, let's get into semantics to work the time down, your family will have to sell the house that you've worked all your life to pay for, but if you're rich, it's a different situation because far less of your earned income is taken away. So if the adult social care plan favours the rich over the poor, then everybody should be saying that the minister, Gillian Keegan, should be reconsidering her plans. She's welcome to a copy of the motion, we can explain why we disagree with her plans, why we have reservations about the care cap, but for goodness sake, we shouldn't be favouring the rich over the poor.
Thank you, councillor Baxter. Councillor Spratt.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Really interesting to listen to the socialists on the independent benches. I just wondered whether it was councillor Dilk's turn to be deputy leader of the Labour Party today, in view that my good friend councillor Lee is not here. But councillor Keighley, it's nice to see you back on form again with your hand better after your Boris batting session. I do want to comment on this, on a couple of points, because I do have a sympathy and a certain empathy with part of this motion, as I've said to the Conservative group previously. It does disproportionately, as it says in the motion, affect poorer people and those, I hate to use the expression, lower value houses, because all houses that people have are high value to the people who own them. But when I use the expression lower value, in the context that I mean it, I think you understand what I'm saying. And a key point is, when councillor Clark spoke from Booter Ward, and when councillor Keighley spoke from Parkward, and I grew up in the same area that those two councillors represent, and I can tell you that there are hundreds, possibly thousands of houses, two ups, two downs, which are a lot lower value than the £211,000 that councillor Keighley mentioned. Indeed. And so what I am saying is, there are two things that I think the government have overlooked. First of all, to be fair, the Dilmot proposals did include a cap. And the idea about having a cap is probably a good idea, but it is disproportionate in certain areas of the country, so I do understand that. But one thing I do think ought to happen, and I feel very, very strongly for the reasons that have been put forward, is that the 20, I can't remember the exact amount, £23,500, which is the disregard at the lower end, ought to be increased. So in other words, if you are in care and ultimately you have to sell your home, ultimately you can only guarantee that you're going to pass £23,000 on to your family. And I think that disregard ought to be increased, possibly, I've not got any fingers on it, but between about £100,000. And that would help enormously people who live in smaller houses, smaller properties and stuff like, and it will allow ordinary working people to pass things on to their family and their spouses and their relations, as well as the people who live in Surrey. And I know councillor Baxter was absolutely right, we don't live in Surrey, we live in Lincolnshire, and there are lots of people, not just in our area, in smaller areas in the rest of the county. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. All right, councillor Smith.
Thank you, chairman. It goes back to councillor Spratt's point, and I will be brief. Just because an individual has a large house that might be valued as a lot of money, it might be due to certain circumstances, like somebody's life insurance, somebody has died unexpectedly and it's through life insurance, it does not mean they are wealthy, it does not mean they have disposable income that they can afford to pay care with. And I entirely agree with councillor Spratt's point that actually the disregard needs to be seriously looked at, because actually, when you put the figure down to £23,000, that is not a lot of money in today's world, whether people like it or not. And I think it's abhorrent that actually people can't pass their house on to their offspring or to their grandchildren or whoever else, because that is the biggest asset anybody can give to their children. And as has been alluded to, Mrs Thatcher enabled that to happen, and it's something we as Conservatives, whatever level of government, should enable the next generation to do, because this country is a land of property owners, and an Englishman's home is his castle or her castle, and we should ensure we do everything we can to keep it that way. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Right, I'm going to go back to councillor Parker now to sum up on the...
Thanks. I suppose this is an appeal actually to, for the breadth of this motion to be accepted and still support. I mean, I've got the motion in front of me and everybody else has, working from the bottom, we're saying four things actually. I think they're quite straightforward. The care cap of £86,000 is much more disadvantageous to people who own more expensive houses. That's a statement that's been picked up and run with throughout this council meeting. So that's one of the things that we would be saying in writing or contacting our Lincolnshire MPs, that that is, needs further consideration. I come back to the words that I used in my motion, which is essentially reconsideration of the present proposal. So that's the first one. Moving up, there is an absence of a long-term strategy to transform the pay terms and conditions of care workers, nor the high vacancy levels. Something must be done about that, there's no getting away from it. We've found, haven't we, and I'm not going over my old argument, essentially people moving out of the care sector to go and work in supermarkets because they can get more money. We've got to give, we've got to set up a long-term strategy to transform the paying conditions of care workers. Thirdly, these proposals do nothing to deal with the immediate pressures facing social care. The immediate pressures. It's not a 2023 job, this is about the here and now, and something must be done about that. And the fourth point, essentially, is this, going back to what Jeremy Hunt said once upon a time, that the seven, when he was Chair of the Commons Health and Social Care Committee, spending needs to increase. The government's commitments don't match its ambitions. So they're the four things that we would say, we would want us to do when we write to the MPs. And I think that we're on the good side, all of us are at the moment, because we've heard nothing that actually reckons of it. And for those reasons, I can't see why we can't, as a council, arrange for a letter to go that sums up the sentiment of not only this paper, this motion, but also the sentiment that's been expressed in this council chamber today.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Right, I'm going to move on to the vote straight away. Would all those in favour of the motion please indicate? Yeah, all those against, please indicate. No, no, so is, and any abstentions? No abstentions. Oh, one abstention, sorry. So that has clearly defeated that motion, so we'll move on then to the conclusion of the meeting. I would like to take the opportunity to wish you all a happy Christmas and a safe and healthy New Year, and a safe journey home. Thank you for your...